All right, let's call the Wednesday, March 5th, 2025, meeting of the Planning Commission to order. Uh, Mr. Trainer, can you call the roll, please?
Yep, Madam Chair. Mr. Polinsky?
Here.
Mr. Duncan?
Here.
Mr. Krasner?
I'm here.
Ms. Coman?
I'm here.
Mr. Stevens?
Here.
Ms. Friedlander?
Here.
And Mr. Krivinsky?
Here.
Thank you, we have a quorum.
Great, thank you. Um, our next item on the agenda is the adoption of the agenda. Any discussion of the agenda? If not, can I have a motion to approve?
Madam Chair, I move to adopt the meeting agenda.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, that takes us to item four of speaker series. We have no speaker series tonight. Item five, receipt of petitions. Mr. Trainer, can you provide a summary of our written correspondence?
Sure, Madam Chair. We had, uh, five petitions written to the Planning Commission for their meeting tonight. Uh, Robin Ramey and Matt Cunningham both, uh, wrote in in support of the accessory dwelling proposal. Uh, John Ward and Michael Doctor wrote to the Planning Commission regarding a citywide, uh, comprehensive stormwater and sewer study. And Kelly Port and Brian Sperry wrote into Planning Commission regarding corner lots, um, under the accessory dwelling proposal.
Great, thank you. Uh, and do we have any in-person petitions tonight?
Uh, we do, um, Madam Chair, um, all for the accessory dwelling public hearings tonight.
Okay, so I think we have the option of receiving, um, those comments now or during the item, is that correct?
Uh, yeah, I, I think because, well, I think everyone here is speaking for accessory dwellings, but we do have two public hearings, so it might just procedurally be easier to do itemized?
Okay.
Public hearing.
Okay. All right, so I think we can move on to our action items. Uh, first action item is 6A, accessory dwelling zoning text amendment, public hearing. Uh, Mr. Fuller, are you introducing the item?
Accessory?
Yeah.
Yeah, sure, yeah.
Mr. Trainer?
Um, is the preference to have the staff report presentation before, um, the speakers, Madam Chair?
Uh, we can, I don't know, what?
That makes sense.
I think, isn't that how we normally do it?
Yeah, we make the speakers have the latest information.
Yeah.
Okay, sure. I know we've, we've done, um, both ways in the past, so I can go ahead and give the staff report presentation, uh, and then we'll hear the, uh, in-person comment.
Okay, that sounds good.
Okay, so, um, tonight, the Planning Commission is requested to hold its public hearing and make a recommendation to City Council on proposed, um, zoning ordinance amendments related to accessory dwellings. City Council granted first reading to, uh, the proposed amendments during its November 25th, 2024 meeting, uh, and is scheduled to have its, um, final consideration at its April 14th meeting. Uh, my presentation tonight is going to cover, uh, some background, uh, as a reminder for, for why the city is considering, uh, updates to accessory dwelling regulations. Um, I'll go over some of the updates to the proposal that have been made since first reading, highlighting those that have been made since, uh, the Planning Commission's, um, previous work session, uh, and then I'll go over some of, on a high level, some of the new, uh, information that's included in the report, which I'll cover in more depth, um, further into the presentation, and, uh, I'll wrap up by, uh, just reviewing the, um, the schedule that this has taken, um, and the remaining dates. So, uh, by way of background, um, uh, review of the city's accessory dwelling, um, uh, regulations is recommended in the city's comprehensive plan in the, uh, housing chapter and is also included in City Council's, uh, priorities plan for calendar year 24 and 25, uh, primarily to address housing diversity in the city as well as, um, offering some flexibility to property owners for, um, housing, um, uh, dependent, uh, family members or, um, also offering some, um, potential additional income to property owners to, uh, perhaps subsidize their own housing costs. Um, and then again, first reading to, um, the proposal was granted by City Council during its November 25th, uh, 2024 meeting. The proposal, uh, you know, considers potential impacts such as, uh, impacts to, uh, well, you know, fiscal nature as well as to the city's, uh, facilities such as, uh, stormwater and sewer, uh, considers equity and privacy concerns and environmental impacts. Um, the proposal kind of, uh, balances mitigating these negative impacts with, uh, the feedback received to date, uh, which includes all the public meetings that have, uh, occurred throughout 2024, uh, and 2025 to date, um, as well as considering, um, you know, local, um, conditions and, um, best practices, um, that have been observed, you know, nationwide, um, and locally in neighboring jurisdictions. So next, I'm going to cover, uh, again, what some of the, uh, new information is, um, both to the proposal and the staff report, beginning, um, with updates to the proposal. So this is the fifth Planning Commission meeting that has happened since first reading, um, was given in November, uh, and so there's been, um, a lot of feedback given since then. Um, this chart kind of covers all of the updates to the proposal, um, that have occurred since first reading. Um, my presentation, uh, now is just going to cover what's new since the Planning Commission's previous work session, um, beginning with the updated height and setback recommendations for detached accessory dwellings. Um, there was, uh, discussion at the last Planning Commission meeting about introducing a sliding scale, um, between the five and 10-foot setback option instead of a binary five or 10-foot, um, that's been included into, um, the draft code. Uh, there's also, um, um, a note about how accessory structures, accessory structures, uh, height are measured in historic properties. Um, section 48.788, uh, six, um, includes a provision, um, uh, that states that accessory or ancillary structures on historic properties, uh, their height are measured to the roof peak, um, that there's, uh, there's been amendment in the draft code to bring that into, uh, conformity with how accessory structures are measured, um, across the city, which is to the, uh, mid-roof line, uh, for the Planning Commission's consideration. Regarding windows in detached accessory dwellings, uh, particularly those facing, uh, neighboring lots, there's the, uh, existing, um, required, it's, it's been in the proposal for several iterations now that, um, any window above the first story of a detached accessory dwelling, um, has to be set back at least 10 feet from the neighboring lot lines. Um, there was discussion, uh, the last Planning Commission meeting about, um, introduction of, uh, clear-story windows, which are those, um, that are above seeing eye level, um, or aren't transparent. These are utilized, uh, to introduce sunlight or more kind of natural light into the accessory dwelling, uh, and also help break up the facade, um, of, of the wall of an accessory dwelling, so it can have benefits to, um, the neighboring property, uh, whereas creating a more, um, kind of interesting facade facing them while preserving, uh, some of that privacy. And so, um, that has been, uh, introduced into the code where clear-story windows would be, um, allowed on, um, on the accessory dwelling, um, closer to the, closer to the, uh, neighboring property lines than 10 feet. Um, if you have non-clear-story windows, again, those would be required to be set back at least 10 feet. So moving on to updates to the staff report or, you know, some more, uh, analysis and data, um, that was requested, um, beginning with rear yard coverage maximum, so, um, I'll talk about this a little bit more, but the Planning Commission discussed at its previous meeting, um, an existing requirement for, uh, accessory structures, um, that says, um, that there's a, a limit, uh, where accessory structures can't occupy more than 30% of the required rear yard. And, uh, as the code is written tonight, um, accessory dwellings would be incorporated in that. Uh, there's more, uh, analysis, again, as, as requested, um, about how this would impact accessory dwellings, which I'll, um, walk the, the commission through, uh, later in, in the presentation. There was another comment about historic properties and the historic and cultural conservation overlay jurisdiction, um, and so we've included, uh, how that would apply to accessory dwellings, um, across the city, uh, and that's included in section 48.788 of the city code, uh, which specifies that the, the HCC, um, does cover the entire city, um, so it captures all of the properties that are, um, you know, within the city's, um, limits, but its regulations only apply to structures that were built as residences before or during 1910 and other structures and sites of historic, uh, cultural or architectural significance, um, that have been designated as such. Lastly, uh, this isn't new information, but I just wanted to flag, uh, that there was discussion at the last Planning Commission meeting, um, about the Board of Zoning Appeals' assessment criteria of special use permits and how that would be applied to accessory dwellings, um, and as well as the Planning Commission's role in such consideration. Um, just want to flag that the, uh, recommendation has been left in the draft code that would, uh, streamline, um, accessory dwelling applications to the Board of Zoning Appeals. Um, and so the, the Planning Commission, right now, the Planning Commission is required to make a recommendation to the BZA, uh, for such, um, applications. Um, again, the provision that would, uh, remove the Planning Commission from that process has been, uh, left in for, uh, the commission's consideration. Next, I'm gonna, uh, just walk through the, uh, proposal, um, just to get, uh, kind of everyone re- reoriented. Um, the, this is the, the framework table, and I'm just gonna kind of walk through each component one last time, um, under what's being proposed tonight. So, um, under gross floor area or size of the accessory dwelling, uh, the proposal's to allow an accessory dwelling to be, um, either 50% of the primary dwelling square footage or 1,000 square feet, whichever is less. And regarding lock coverage, to, uh, comply with existing standards for single-family homes, that includes a 25% building coverage maximum, 30, uh, excuse me, 25% building coverage maximum, 35%, uh, impervious surface coverage maximum, and a 20% tree canopy coverage minimum, uh, the last of which gets enforced, uh, at the grading plan stage. Also included the 30% maximum, um, coverage of the required rear yard area for accessory buildings, which again, uh, the way the code is written right now would include detached accessory dwellings. Regarding location, um, we're talking about the single-family districts in the city, that's R1A and R1B, uh, would be permitted to construct, uh, or have accessory dwellings by right, um, as accessory uses, and in the RM districts, access, uh, accessory dwellings, uh, would remain the conditional use that it is today, uh, requiring a special use permit granted by the Board of Zoning Appeals. Uh, there are no, um, off-street parking requirements, um, proposed. Short-term rental, uh, would not be permitted in accessory dwellings under the proposal, uh, and an owner-occupant requirement is also not included in the, um, proposal. Uh, the city attorney, um, uh, will be on, will be joining, uh, the meeting tonight, I believe she had a, um, um, something she, she had to, she couldn't, she has something at 7, uh, but will be joining this meeting, uh, for any legal specific questions for the city attorney. A occupancy maximum of, uh, three inhabitants has been included in, uh, the proposal. And regarding approval, um, there's, uh, the proposal includes a maximum of one accessory dwelling, uh, permitted per lot, and any accessory dwelling would be subject to, uh, those same, um, building safety and permit checks, uh, in, um, that a, a single-family home, uh, are subject to. For, uh, detached accessory dwellings specifically, uh, regarding heights, uh, we've included the, uh, sliding scale here, um, but still, um, an accessory dwelling under the proposal is permitted to be one-story or 15 feet, uh, whichever is less when that's setback five feet, or one and a half stories, uh, or 20 feet, whichever is less when setback 10 feet, uh, with that sliding scale introduced, uh, between the five and 10-foot setbacks, where for every additional foot you're set back, uh, from that five-foot setback, um, the accessory dwelling would be granted an additional foot in height. Uh, so you're keeping the two binary, um, options that were presented previously, uh, but just introducing a little bit more flexibility in between. Uh, so that information's the same as the setbacks, and, uh, also included here are the clear-story windows, which I covered earlier. Uh, and lastly, for, um, existing accessory buildings, uh, accessory dwellings, um, and non-conforming accessory structures that are built before January 1st, 2024, uh, shall require a special use permit granted by the Board of Zoning Appeals. So any existing, um, accessory building, um, today would be eligible for conversion if it was built before January 1st, 2024, um, and if it does not comply with those requirements for, um, a new accessory dwelling, then it would, um, be required to get a special use permit from the BZA. Because moving into the staff analysis section, um, I'll go down to, uh, some of the new analysis that, uh, was requested, which primarily covers the, um, uh, required rear yard setback area, that's under the lock coverage and, uh, orientation part of the lot. Um, so we included these, uh, kind of site plan, uh, models previously, that shows, um, you know, the buildable area of the accessory dwelling in, in the total backyard area, not to be confused with the rear yard. So, the, we're talking about the required rear yard area, which is defined by the setback, uh, specific area for the single-family home, um, that's shaded in red here, and again, the current code is written that accessory buildings, uh, cannot occupy, uh, more than 30% of this required rear yard area. Uh, I believe that the zoning intent for that is, you know, is to kind of mitigate against, uh, overcrowding of buildings, uh, in the back of the yard, so what this requirement really does is, um, push, um, additional accessory buildings more to the, um, center of the lot or closer to the home. Um, and so, again, what, what this requirement does is, uh, kind of, uh, ensure some, some more open space towards the back of the lot. Um, but we've, uh, you know, again, included some more analysis about, um, some other considerations for this 30%. Again, being if you have, uh, for instance, uh, an existing accessory building, um, in, in the, um, required rear yard area, that takes away from, um, the space that might go to an accessory, uh, dwelling, and so the orientation of the accessory dwelling, uh, in the lot may be decided for a property owner, um, if they're, um, not able to, um, you know, remove the existing structure in there. Um, it also, um, could prevent, um, you know, in this example, um, an accessory dwelling of 675 square feet, you know, which is complying with the, um, building and impervious surface coverage of the lot, um, but wouldn't be able to be built in this orientation, um, because you're occupying too much of the rear yard area, uh, where this kind of orientation might be desirable by keeping more of the central backyard space available for, for use. Um, a property owner may, you know, be forced to build it, um, vertically like this, um, which, you know, kind of just moves over the, the usable open space into the side, um, but obviously, these, these examples, um, uh, have a lot of assumptions where, um, you know, you don't exactly know what the conditions are. And so, the 30% does, uh, represent a, uh, kind of limitation to the property owner where, um, there's, there's less flexibility to kind of incorporate some of the existing conditions on the lot, including vegetation, um, neighbor privacy or, um, other accessory structures on the lot. Um, the flip side is, is that it would ensure, um, again, some more open space in, um, the kind of furthest, um, reaches of, of the lot. So, um, you know, the Planning Commission, uh, requested some, some, uh, options to, in, in considering this, um, so what we've done is, um, this, this table shows, you know, what a standard, uh, lot, for a standard lot in the R1A and R1B district, what that required rear yard, um, area is, and what, uh, that coverage maximum would be, uh, for, uh, you know, various intervals. And I believe that's, um, it for the new information, uh, in the staff report. Um, I'll just, uh, oh, um, right, and so in the, um, public engagement section, uh, we did poll the, um, online questionnaire responses, um, those were polled on, uh, February 24th, um, and those summaries have been, uh, compiled as an attachment to this report. Um, uh, obviously, the, the bulk of the information are open-ended responses, and so that would just be kind of too much to include, uh, in this report. Um, it's several pages of, um, folks' responses to, um, each specific component, uh, of the proposal. Um, and so those have been included, uh, again, as an attachment, um, updated numbers will be, uh, polled and summarized for City Council ahead of their, uh, work session. Um, and so that will be, uh, again, included for City Council's, uh, review and consideration. And then, uh, lastly, I'll just close with the timing section. Um, again, this is, tonight is the, um, Planning Commission's public hearing, uh, and recommendation to City Council. Uh, we got here over, um, a year's worth of work, uh, beginning in January of last year, when the Planning Commission, uh, held its scope of work, uh, work session, um, and then, um, throughout the summer, held many work sessions along with, um, your peer boards in commissions and City Council. Uh, we held six open house meetings at various stages of the proposal development, uh, throughout 2024, including most recently in January, um, of this year. Um, and so again, tonight, March 5th, is the Planning Commission's public hearing. Uh, the remaining dates on the schedule are City Council's final work session, uh, which is scheduled for March 10th, and then City Council's final consideration date of April 14th. So thank you, uh, Madam Chair, I'll turn it back to you for any questions.
Great, thank you very much, Mr. Trainer, thank you for all your hard work on this over the past year. Um, so this is a public hearing, so I think we can go ahead and open the public hearing and invite any speakers who wish to speak on this item up to the podium.
Okay. Uh, first speaker, speaker slip I have is Gene Gresko.
Welcome.
And as a reminder, each speaker will have three minutes.
And please state your name and address.
Hi, I'm Gene Gresko, and I live on North.
Can you check that your, is your mic on?
Yes. Yes.
Okay.
Uh, I agree with Mr. Krasner's recent comments that five feet, five feet is too close for an AD to be built away from a neighbor's lot line. Homeowners bought homes expecting neighbors to be 10 to 15 feet away. That's the privacy that should be maintained. Some might say that sheds could already, already be built that close, so what's the big deal? But we're talking about a much larger second dwelling that's up to 1,000 square feet in area, much like this example. Our planning staff has always showed the AD being built in an out-of-the-way corner of the backyard, but the current proposal allows an AD such as this to be almost next to the primary house, greatly impacting privacy. And this example AD could be built parallel to the lot line with all these windows, five feet away, facing the neighbor. Some would say, oh, the neighbor could build a fence or shrubs. Really? So you're taking away privacy and then asking the neighbor to spend money to retain what should have never been taken away in the first place. The solution is to go with a 10-foot setback, not five. This would retain existing privacy and still achieve all of the goals that you have in front of you for ADs. I ask that this commission discuss and agree on a 10-foot minimum. That's the fair solution to our citizens. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next speaker is Kelly Port.
Make sure that mic was on, it didn't sound like it was on to me. My ears are, I don't know, I think they worked, but I, it sounded very low. Uh, did you, anyone else notice that, or is that just me?
Yeah, I noticed it, that's why I asked. Uh, I wonder if the speakers in here are on.
Yeah, I'm not hearing anything. It should sound like that, when you tap on it, and I didn't hear it.
The green light's on, yeah. Is there any volume control further? Testing one, two, three?
I never hear.
As long as the public can hear.
Where's our sound engineer?
It may just be the volume in this room.
Testing one, two, three? Same, huh? Yep. I think that, they're both the same, so, go ahead.
Welcome.
Is that green line on, Kelly? On the, okay, thanks.
Okay, I'll try to talk as loudly as possible. Okay. Good evening, my name is Kelly Port, I live at 305 Walnut Street. My husband and I will both be speaking this evening, and we've also emailed our comments to Mr. Trainer earlier today. Our primary concern with the current AD or accessory dwelling plans is the lack of specific consideration for ADs on corner lots. All of the model schematics shown to date in presentations, questionnaires, and et cetera, have been for interior lots where the AD is situated in the backyard. The picture is quite different for an AD on a corner lot where there is no backyard, only two front yards and two side yards. In particular, setbacks for corner lots should follow the same 10-foot side yard setback requirement as primary dwellings, regardless of AD height, and should not be allowed to be less than the actual front setback of either of the adjacent primary dwellings for the following reasons. Number one, AD should be constructed no less than 10 feet from the property line on the two side yards to prevent situations where the AD is only 15 feet from a neighboring primary dwelling. That would be the five-foot setback for the AD plus the 10-foot setback for the primary dwelling. Current regulations for two adjacent primary dwellings require 10-foot side yard setbacks for each, resulting in 20 feet of separation. However, a five-foot setback for the AD would result in two occupied dwellings being closer together than has been envisioned for R1A and R1B lots by city planners. Number two, current plans limit an AD's front setback to be no more than the setback of the primary dwelling. On a corner lot, this could mean that the AD is sited closer to the On a corner lot, this could mean that the AD is sited closer to the street than a neighboring primary dwelling. This puts the accessory dwelling on equal footing with primary dwellings, which seems contrary to the spirit of an AD. The AD should at a minimum be no closer to the street than either the owner's primary dwelling or the next-door neighbor's primary dwelling, whichever is further from the street. And number three, while it has been pointed out that garages and sheds have only a three-foot minimum setback, they are not occupied dwellings. Two occupied dwellings close to each other have far greater issues with privacy.
Brian Sperry.
Good evening. My name is Brian Sperry, and I too live at 305 Walnut Street. I will be continuing with my wife's and my concerns about ADs on corner lots. An AD sitting only 15 feet from a neighboring house has a potential to impact groundwater flow on the neighboring land. Issues like this are typically addressed by the grading and site plan that must be submitted for any construction that disturbs more than 2,500 square feet of land. However, it seems plausible for a 1,000 gross square foot AD on a corner lot with easy street accessibility for construction to not meet that disturbance threshold and therefore never require a review of water runoff. We would suggest requiring a grading and site plan for an AD on a corner lot. Number five, a five-foot setback is not sufficient space for screening foliage. Our visits to nearby garden nurseries have indicated that there are not screening plantings, either bushes or trees, that can grow one and a half stories tall while being no wider than five feet and have enough branches to successfully screen the two dwellings. A five-foot setback, therefore, will put the burden of screening on the neighboring lot that receives no financial benefit from the AD next door. Finally, tall privacy fences are a screening option. However, if the AD is closer to the street than the neighboring primary home, and it's not uncommon for neighboring older homes to be set further back from the street, the fence height becomes limited to four feet along the portion bordering the neighboring front yard, and a four-foot tall fence will not provide any privacy screening. And even the seven-foot fence allowed along the side yard will not provide full screening between the homes. Given the unique relationship between corner lots and their neighboring interior lots, we would ask that you please establish setbacks for corner lots to be as we have described and consider requiring grading or site plans for corner lots. And in closing, we appreciate your consideration of our concerns and also for your time serving on the Falls Church City Planning Commission. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Mary Chavez. Followed by Janet.
Welcome. Madam Chair and Commissioners, I'm Mary Chavez, 215 Lawton Street. I would like to focus on where engaged residents stand on the outstanding issues to be resolved this evening. The staff online survey has recently been made available with more than 200 responses. Clearly, the public has strong concerns about the proposed zoning changes, sending in hundreds of specific comments. Of the issues posed by staff, 60 to 75% of respondents would maintain current lot coverage requirements, prohibit short-term rentals, and require a BZA special use permit to convert non-compliant accessory structures. However, there is a clear 50-50 split on the permitted size of detached ADs and elimination of the current parking requirement for accessory dwellings. And there is strong opposition, 40% in favor, 60% opposed, to heights up to 25 feet, the proposed five and 10-foot setbacks, and the exclusion of owner occupancy requirements. Heights have been adjusted, but the public doesn't support staff on the five-foot setback and owner occupancy by a wide margin. Suggestions to graduate heights within the five to 10-foot setback compound the issue and move height toward the property line. A five-foot setback can accommodate canopy trees and may cause trees on both sides of the fence to be eliminated if their roots would be compromised by an AD's construction. That happened to me at my expense. Five feet is just too close. I urge you to focus on the 10 to 15-foot setbacks currently permitted for the main dwelling. Owner occupancy is currently required here for internal ADs. The city hasn't been sued over that provision, and no other Virginia jurisdiction has been either for including it with regard to detached units. Excluding owner occupancy opens the door to broader change to neighborhoods than residents are ready to accept. It is a key issue that shouldn't be just swept under the rug as legal ambiguity. Once it's eliminated, it would be very hard to claw back. Finally, you have a new issue before you, whether to expand an AD's share of the required rear yard. The rationale would be to eliminate difficulties for owners with a shed in that area or if the main house sits further back on the property. The simple answer, take down the shed or have an internal AD or an add-on AD. We don't have to change everything to accommodate building more attached detached units. I thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Janet.
Hi, I'm Janet Gores. I live at 121 South Lee Street. I think the people who have spoken before me have expressed many of my concerns, but I guess I'll reiterate them just to pile it up. First, the only inhabited dwelling that I would have within five feet of my property line would be a doghouse, and then it would have to have a very agreeable dog. It's just too close. Things should be left as they are, and that would be with 10-foot setback or more. Secondly, it's a stated goal of the Planning Commission to increase housing in this city. It's also a stated goal to increase green space and tree canopy, and there's quite a conflict there. And I think a five-foot setback is going to very badly impinge upon any goal to try and increase tree canopy or green space. I mean, this is five feet. I measured. I measured my arms. I think I'm maybe an inch over five feet. I mean, that's, you can't plant a tree in there, and it would kill the tree next door, as Mary Chavez has just said. These buildings aren't just buildings five feet from the fence. They're also requiring grading. When you build a building, you scrape stuff. I think you all know that the roots of a tree, you know, it's not a root ball like you get when you go to the nursery. They are dispersed, there's as much tree below the ground as there is above the ground. I'm an ex-tree commissioner, so I get going on this. There's as much tree above the ground as there is below, and it is not going down to China. It's occupying, you know, this space, the two to three-foot space below the surface of your lawn or mulch or whatever, and it competes with the lawn. That's why tree commissioners always want mulch around trees instead of lawn. So if you have that grading, I mean, grading is, I think, what killed Mary's tree. And I have, and my neighbor has, in his backyard, a great big black walnut that, you know, creates a hard hat area every fall and is a place that the hawks like to sit, and it's a lovely tree. If I were to build an ADU five feet from that tree, it would be dead. Any large tree would be dead if you build that close and grade, you know, all along that fence. So the other thing I was thinking about, I was talking to friends about, who had had things built around them, and, oop, had things built, okay. You need trees to soak up water. The builders come in, they make a little channel, they make, grade and make drainage. It doesn't do the job. You need to have enough vegetation. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers?
All the slips I have.
Is there anybody else here who would like to speak on this item? Not, I think we can close the public hearing and move on to Planning Commission discussion.
I think Sally draws.
Oh, and is Ms. Gillette with us?
She is. Looks like she is.
Oh, terrific. Ms. Gillette, would you like to make any comments at this time?
Oh, thank you for the opportunity. I wanted to let the Planning Commission know that the city council voted on Monday, and I'm sorry I joined you late this evening. I had a surprise meeting at my daughter's school. But my, what I wanted to convey, if Jack hasn't already conveyed it, is that the Planning Commission voted on Monday to allow the documents that contained legal advice in those communications to be open to the public. So I am able, and you all are able, to speak more freely on the issue of owner occupancy. I am going to be with you this evening virtually to answer any questions, so I'll stand by and wait until those, any questions are raised. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Who would like to begin? Maybe I can ask you a question, Mr. Trainer, on the corner lot question. I know that was something that we discussed early on. I know that Arlington has a 10-foot setback. Can you speak on that? You know, what research staff has done on that item? And can you also remind us, it's two front yards, two side yards for corner lots?
That's correct. That's right. So each, on a corner lot, the accessory dwelling would be subject to the two front yard setbacks. There's a provision in the code that says accessory dwellings can't be located in the front yard of the principal dwelling, and so that, depending on what zone it is, it's different for each zone. But the accessory dwelling would be subject to the front yard setback on both.
So that would prevent it from being closer to the street than the principal dwelling?
So would not be closer to the street than the principal. It would always be at least as far from the street than the principal dwelling that it is accessory to.
Okay, thank you. And then do you know, did you speak to your colleagues in Arlington about why they have the 10-foot setback for corner lots?
Not specifically.
I can ask a follow-up question on that.
Sure.
When you say front yard, are we talking about the minimum required front setback?
The setback.
Or the actual yard? Because a house can be situated well behind the minimum front setback. So are you saying that ordinance has currently written would allow someone to build an ADU in front of the house so long as it was meeting the minimum front setback?
It would have to meet the.
Do we intend to do, well, I'll let you answer first. Was that what it would do?
Yeah, the intention is to not be closer to the yard, the street than the house, so it'd be.
Well, how is it worded now in the ordinance? Because if it's not worded correctly, because there's a yard, and I forget how it's defined in our code, there's a yard, which is anything in front of your front wall of your house to your front, yeah, lot line. That's all your front yard. But then there's the minimum front setback, which is a smaller number, unless your house was built right at the minimum. And if we're just saying an ADU can't be in the minimum's front setback, okay, but then it's still in the front yard. So we gotta see how we define that, because if we're just saying it has to meet the minimum front setback of the zone, then it could be located in front of the main dwelling. I don't think we're intending to do that, as I know I'm not intending to do that.
Well, he's looking for that as, am I correct that you're, that the thought behind what you're saying is that you wouldn't want to see an AD closer to, let's say, the front street than the primary?
Right. Exactly. I mean, like, in R1A, I forget, what is the front setback in R1A? 30? What's the minimum front setback?
I don't know. I believe it's 30 in R1A.
It's 30 in R1A and 25 in R1B.
So let's say the house was setback 45. The current house today is setback 40. I don't think I want to see the AD setback at 30 if the main dwelling is setback at 40. That's kind of, I think, runs counter to the idea of it being clearly subordinate as an accessory use. Some of that has to do with where it's located on the lot, in my view, my opinion.
Sorry. I thought it was right in the standards section. We did have that.
Yeah, I remember it. It's listed in the, in the table, not permitted in front yards.
I did a word search on the, on corner, and it's not in the regulation, I don't think. It's in.
Yeah, there isn't one. I think he's looking for a broader regulation that would, for all lots, that would not permit an AD to be built in the front yard.
Yeah.
But if a corner lot has two front yards, this only refers to the side and rear, so it doesn't address the corner lot, I think is how I read this.
If it's two front yards and it can't be built in it, then it would be at the level of the house.
It would be built at the back.
I don't know, I guess it depends on how you're envisioning.
How it's oriented.
Yeah.
And it's a special use permit.
So you have two front yards, and the house is here, and it can't be built in either of those front yards, so.
Because you have a back that this applies to.
Which are actually side yards on a corner lot.
Right. Like, this is written towards back and side yards. That's how I read that. Back setbacks, rear setbacks, and side setbacks. Nothing about a front. So if you were a corner, you have two fronts. So you're, it can't be situated there.
Right.
That's how I, that's how I interpret this.
That's, but that's what we want, right? Is that a concern? I don't understand.
Right. I think it, I think this is limiting it so that you cannot put it.
In the front yard.
Because you have two fronts on a corner lot.
Right. So we're agreeing?
Yeah.
Okay.
But our ordinance is, you know, we gotta be careful, because the ordinance talks about a front building setback line. The definition of front yard in the ordinance, it's yard, comma, front, means a yard extending from the side lot line to side lot line between the front lot line and the front building setback line. So not the building itself, just the building setback line. A house could be constructed well behind the building, the minimum building setback line. And so that would, if we're referencing off that definition, saying you just can't build it in the front yard, we're not saying you can't build it in front of the main dwelling, which I think is not, at least I'm not intending to allow that. And that would be especially a problem on a corner lot. I mean, that's where you'd probably see it. You know, on an interior lot, it'd be unlikely that you'd be able to do that. On most of our lots, they're small, they're too small, there's not, there wouldn't be enough room between the building, if they're, you know, even if the house was setback well behind, there probably wouldn't be enough room. But on a corner lot, you absolutely could have a situation where that could, that could occur.
So I have a corner lot, and, I mean, the way we refer to it is, is as this, the house, as it's oriented towards the street, the front of the house, there is a side yard, and then behind that house, our house, which is not the street that the address is on, we refer to that as the rear yard. And so I think the concern would be the rear of the house. You would have, you would, you would at least need to have that as far back as the house itself on either dimensions, right? Is that what we're saying? We want, we want the AD setback.
At least as far as the current. At least as far as the current house.
At least as far as the current house on the side, if it's on the side, or if it's in the rear.
Well, the zoning ordinance, it's tricky, because I know if you live in a corner lot, you may not think of it that way, but zoning ordinance would say that you don't have a rear yard. You have two fronts and two sides. But I get it, people have what they consider to be their functional rear yard, but on anything that's adjacent to a street is a front, and then the other two are sides. So I don't see that in this draft, Mr. Trinder, so...
Yeah, it's in the framework, so was intended, but I think we had it in here. I'm not sure exactly where it went, but it's something we can include back under the standards section as being not permitted in the front yard setback.
Well, again...
Is it the front yard setback or the distance, whichever is less? The front yard setback or the actual line of the front yard of the front? There's a technical term, I don't know.
You just say it shall be no closer to the street than the primary dwelling?
Than the main dwelling, yeah. We could also say that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, and I know the ordinance...
It should not be located in the front yard nor closer to the street than the primary dwelling. That would be my recommendation.
And there's already, I mean, there's a precedent for that in the sense that the ordinance already, you know, with the whole front yard averaging thing, you know, already talks about, refers to the location of the house as opposed to just the minimum regulation. I mean, that concept, so I'm saying that concept already exists in the code despite what our definition of, you know, front yard is. It's too bad Ms. Rusi's not here. But that's something I think is an important concept that when we're talking about accessory, you know, when most people, how most people would think of something that's accessory would be something that is most typically behind, but certainly not, you know, in front of the main dwelling, you know, except perhaps on a very large property where you'd have, you know, maybe a small building that could be, you know, could be in front and still might be considered accessory because it'd be so clearly subordinate and smaller. But we don't have those kind of lots in Falls Church, so, anyhow, so I think that's...
So that proposal makes, works from your perspective?
Well, I'll have to talk about the exact wording, but, yeah, in general, yeah, yeah. Something like that could work. See what people think.
Any other comments on that? If not, I mean, I think staff did identify a few pending items for us to discuss, so maybe we can just, I can just walk us through the list if nobody has any immediate comments off the bat. Do we want to discuss the rear yard 30% coverage requirement? Mr. Stevens, did you have thoughts on that?
Yeah, we kind of introduced this at our last meeting, so had a chance to think about it. And I think as I look at it, try to grasp what it means, it really seems to me to be more about aesthetics and the lining up of structures in this defined space called a rear yard. It doesn't add any to open space because we already have the 25% building and 35% impervious restrictions. So, you know, that's where we keep our open spaces, is from those two parameters. So it seems like this is really more to do with aesthetics, which maybe it has some value, I don't know. Since it's in somebody's backyard, it strikes me as having, you know, kind of less impact. But it would, I think, through some of the discussions that have come between the last meeting and this meeting restrict some of the flexibility of the owner as far as placement of an accessory dwelling. So I'd be inclined to suggest that we drop the application of the 30% rear yard requirement to an accessory dwelling.
Great, thank you. Any other thoughts? Mr. Duncan?
Yeah, I would support what Mr. Stevens just said. I think we're all, to some degree, informed by our personal experience or certainly professional expertise, but in this particular case, I can recall two things. One, you know, when we first moved into our house in 1985, we had the notion that we wanted an auxio, we didn't know that it was going to be called that, but the notion that we wanted an auxiliary building, but the placement, of course, under the rules that we have now would have required it to be so close to the principal house that it would have basically ruined the backyard experience for everybody. And so we dropped the idea. I mean, I actually want to encourage these structures, dwellings, to be pushed into the backyard corners, because in my personal experience, that's the dead zone. You know, that's where people put their sheds, people put their paws of limbs and junk and so forth.
Why is this, huh?
And therefore, you know, adding any kind of notion or incentive that we would want the accessory dwelling to be in the center of the backyard or more towards the center of the backyard in my mind just wastes all the space behind it and would, I think, discourage people from applying for building the accessory dwellings that we want to encourage, I think, by passing this ordinance. So again, I would agree with what Mr. Stevens said. I don't think it's necessary, and it doesn't really achieve any gain on open space or impervious cover. So that's my view on this one.
Any other thoughts? Mr. Krasner?
I would not support doing that. I think that's another provision that, again, is sort of weighing too heavily on someone who might build an ADU at the expense, you know, of what might be adjacent. The far rear corner of your yard might be a very different area on the adjacent neighbor's yard, the way they view that area on the other side of the lot line. And the impact could be significant, which dovetails with the concern about setback, but we'll talk about that, I guess, later. So I would not support doing that. I think it also adds to, you know, again, concerns about additional, I know we have the lot coverage total limit, but that implies that, like, a lot, always, all parts of the lot drain the same way isn't always true. Sometimes the front of your yard, your lot drains to the street, and the back of your yard drains to the rear. And having more coverage of that rear yard area might cause additional negative impacts as far as increased stormwater going in a specific direction while perhaps still at an overall macro level, I think macro of the whole lot, be under the limit. So I think, again, that's something that I would be reticent to casually cast aside a part of the ordinance that's been in place for a long time without having more information and background on that particular section of the code. I don't want to assume that it's for aesthetics, all due respect to my colleague, Mr. Stevens. I don't know why that's in there. I'd like to know if we're going to just cast it aside for this purpose. So I would not support doing that without a lot more information about where it came from and what it's intended to do.
Thank you. Any thoughts down this way?
I'll go. I'm actually, I would not be okay with changing what the current requirement is for many of the reasons that Commissioner Krasner has mentioned. I think that right now, as it stands, as this policy is written, it is really strongly in favor of the property owner at the expense of not only the directly adjacent neighbors and the impact to them and their property values, their property light, their property vegetation, but also to the community as a whole, which is something that we are here to implement the comprehensive plan, which talks about maintaining that community that we cherish so strongly. That social contract or social accountability to your neighbors as a property owner living on your property is totally different than having two renters on that property. There's no longer a social accountability for that property care and use. And so I would, for this specifically, I would say, I think that it's in the code for a very good reason. I'm curious what that is there for. It's been here for a while. I don't see the need to change it. If you have the requirement to, that is the only place that you think it needs to be, there's a special use permit option available for you. I think the thing that we need to be thinking about is we are trying to create a policy that says, yes, you can do this by right within these parameters. If you are outside of those parameters, you're still welcome to evaluate it and have it go through the special use permit process. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Kravinsky?
I wanted to, I think there's opportunities here for us to be aggressive in giving property owners opportunities, but I think there's also areas to be conservative and be very understanding of where this is going to impact neighbors, specifically in this area and in the spacing and the setbacks area. This is going to create more density. There's no, like, that is what this does. But I think there is a way to be conservative and still find out what works and adjust as needed. The initial staff report says we're talking maybe one or two a year type of situation, not 20 or 30 or 40. So I think this gives us an opportunity to, I would not support making these changes, not because I have strong feelings about exactly what the answer should be, but more I'd like to understand why these rules are in place now before we get rid of those rules. So I think there's an opportunity here to be aggressive on how we make available things for our residents, how we may give them optionality and increase density, increase housing opportunities, without necessarily throwing out the baby with the bathwater in some of these conversations. So I wouldn't agree with this particular change, but I do think some of our options in terms of capacity and owner occupancy do give us some flexibility in this regard.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Kravinsky, you want to weigh in?
I generally agree with Mr. Stevens and Mr. Duncan and anything that gives the homeowner additional flexibility unless we can have a, build a strong argument as to why we wouldn't do that. And it sounds like we're not sure why that regulation is, or that ordinance is in there in the first place. So I would, I would agree with Mr. Stevens and Mr. Duncan.
All right, thank you. Can I ask you, Mr. Trinder, can you go to line 1620? This is the draft code that would make this change. I just wanted to ask about the current language.
Mm-hmm.
So as it's written today, minimum rear yard, except residential development, there isn't really anything about, like, intent for this restriction anywhere in the code that you've seen?
Right, so the way it's written today, and again, the blue bold is, are the proposed additions, and the red cut-through is obviously what's proposed to be struck in. So the spirit of the section today is meant to capture all accessory buildings. You know, what's being considered now is introducing a new standard, right? A new kind of accessory building that doesn't exist today, accessory dwellings in backyards. And so the way this code is written, and again, it captures accessory buildings today by capturing the, everything under the maximum height that an accessory building is allowed to be built to today, which is 12 feet in height. And so the way, so as the code appears before you, including accessory dwellings within this section, would stay true to the spirit of the way the code is enforced today, but again, you're introducing a new standard that the code doesn't necessarily consider, and that's accessory dwellings.
Okay, so the change, so accessory dwellings weren't really on the radar because nothing over 12 feet could have been built in the rear yard before today?
And any accessory dwelling is going to be built above 12 feet in height.
Right, so you're sort of changing it to incorporate accessory dwellings because they are another sort of accessory use that was just not envisioned?
Correct.
Okay, that's helpful. Well, I would agree with my colleagues, Mr. Stevens, Mr. Duncan, and Mr. Kravinsky, that I do think that I would prefer to have the homeowner have more flexibility in the placement of these accessory dwellings for lots of reasons. I mean, I think this actually would probably have an impact on a lot of folks who have sheds and want to build an AD, and they would have to, I think, everybody wants to put these in the rear corners of the yard, and I think this restriction would make that a lot harder. And I think it would give you a little bit less flexibility in terms of the placement. So I would agree with the three of them that I would prefer to exclude accessory dwellings from this provision. So if we were to change the code here, we would strike the blue, I mean, assuming we have the votes to do this, but we would strike the blue and say, accept detached accessory dwellings?
Yeah, I think striking the blue language in the first part would achieve that.
We also need to discuss special use permits. We had a discussion last time about whether these should come to the planning commission or go straight to the BZI. Any further thoughts on that?
I did have a question from, Jack, from the beginning of the meeting. You were talking, running through some of the changes and talking about the special use permits, specifically about how a, an existing dwelling that needed, that didn't conform, existing dwelling, I think, before 2024, that didn't conform would need to come through a special use permit. Is that a, but that seemed like a change from a one-time permit to the current special use permitting process, which I believe is once every X number of years. They have to renew that? Is that a change, is that the expectation? Because I think this informs...
Not be renewed. Yeah, I mean, I think it's awarded once.
It'd be a one-time special use permit. So it didn't change? It still continues to be a one-time?
It's not one-time now, that's why it's so onerous for people to have to renew it.
I'm on board with that. But can you, sorry, can you go back real quick to that thing? Because I read it the other way.
Okay.
That it was going, that it was originally written as one-time in the draft, in the proposal, that it was going to...
Do you want the corresponding code section, or do you want the, in the staff report?
I think, I think what's in the code controls, so that would be the answer, but could you go back to the staff report just real quick, just to make sure I'm understanding this correctly? It's in the last box of the, yeah, it's in one of these boxes. Oh, sorry, it's, it is up here. Yeah, there's, this isn't the thing that I was looking at, but it was specific to the one, I'll see if I can find it in the document, and we can go on to the discussion. But I think if it's, if it's a one-time thing...
Yeah, there's a discussion, sorry, at line 127, there's a discussion of current conditions. Is this what you read?
I wrote it, I wrote down that I read it, but I didn't write down where, where I read it. So give me a second to find it.
Issued special use permits for accessory dwellings require zoning administrator approval for renewal every three years.
Yes.
So that's today.
Right. And I thought we had talked about making it a one-time...
Yeah, that's the, it would be a one-time special use permit.
Which I'm in agreement with. Let me go see if I can find the thing that I didn't see.
Okay, okay.
One-time, and it's only for RM, right?
Correct. Well, and any, any existing...
Is the existing structure.
Any existing accessory building?
Yes.
Yeah, the reason I was concerned about it is if we have a significant number of those, that would, the process, anyway, then form the process we were trying to figure out.
Mm-hmm.
Give me a second to see if I can find it.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
If that's the case, and it goes through the zoning...
BZA.
The BZA, the Board of Zoning Appeals. I think in, later in this, in the policy, it removes us from that process. So even in that one-time review, I think it's important for the planning commission to have a view of that special use permit of a conversion of an accessory building to an accessory dwelling. I don't want to give up that right. I think it's important for us to be able to maintain that right.
But we would still be recommending to the BZA, right, under your...
I don't know if it's written that way in...
Sorry, it's, I found it, it's 185, line 185.
I don't think it's in...
As, sure, as Commissioner Stevens has proposed, the planning commission would, so right now the planning commission does make a recommendation, that's its role in the review process, the proposal would remove the planning commission and streamline the application straight to the Board of Zoning Appeals.
Right, if you go to line 1029 and 1030...
I thought we had consensus last time that...
I thought we had consensus last time that we didn't like this.
I think we were...
But it's, it's in there, the way that it's written.
Yeah, staff didn't, still left it in there. I don't know why. But they, I thought we just said, we said we didn't like that. We wanted it deleted.
Can you scroll to 1029?
1029?
Yeah.
I mean, the BZA is free to, you know, do what they're going to do. But I think having our review, like we do on any other special permit, is, they can take it or leave it, but I think it's worthwhile to provide that.
Right. But we would still be making a recommendation then to them, and they would...
Yeah, well, not the way staff has it. Staff has left that in there. So we, I thought we asked to have to delete that.
Oh, sorry.
I don't know that we were like, I, I was ambivalent the last time. I mean, I will say I thought more about this. And I, and I think that it makes sense to streamline the, this review process as staff is recommending. So that, that's where I am on this. I, I mean, thinking about the role of the BZA and the role of the planning commission, I don't, I don't know that we both need to be doing the same.
We do it on every other special permit?
Here's, here's what I'm for, and then tell me how I'm going to vote on this. I would like us to have as streamlined as possible a, you know, by right construct on all these issues that we're debating. And enable applications that meet those standards to be moved through expeditiously by staff and by the BZA if necessary. However, if someone wants to submit an application that does not check all the boxes that we, you know, have set out on the streamline process, they do have to get a special use permit. And in that case, I would be all right with letting the planning commission express its opinion to the BZA on that. I mean, I, I basically want to encourage people to not exceed the limits that we have debated and discussed here. Once we agree on setbacks, height, you know, owner occupied all the issues, then I want to see applications that meet those standards. And if they don't meet any of those, any or any one of those standards, then they got to get an S U P. And essentially, I want to discourage people from building taller, bigger, you name it. So where, where, where does that position fall on the spectrum?
I think there are two different, I mean, there are two different possibilities. Somebody wants to build something new that's outside of the rules that we've set. But there's also the sort of conversion of existing structures into dwellings. And I guess that's the case where I'd, I'd prefer that to be streamlined, as you say. And if, for that to be streamlined, it would need to go just directly to the BZA rather than through us and then to the BZA. So it's an extra step for the homeowner and applicant, an extra cost, which is, you know, where I'm coming from in terms of removing planning commission.
That was a very good clarification. So what, we have two situations. One is when we want to convert an existing structure to an AD, and that would be, we're, there's some discussion about whether that needs to come in front of the planning commission or not. And then the other special use permit would be if, in fact, the, a new structure would not abide by the existing ordinance, and that would require a special use structure permit. And that potentially, there's a suggestion that if, if there's a variance from the ordinance for a new structure, that would have to come in front of the planning commission. Is that correct? Is that what we're saying?
That, that, that sounds like more what I would...
We're not talking about variances. Let's not conflate the terms.
No, not variance. The special use permit is... Inconsistent with the ordinance.
Do you have a clarification, Mr. Trainer?
Yeah, one quick clarification. So under the proposal, the, a special use permit would be required if you're converting an existing structure that does not conform to those regulations if, if you were building a new accessory structure. So if you had a, a shed that's setback three feet from the property line that was built in 1995, you would need a special use permit to convert that into an accessory dwelling because it wouldn't meet the at least five-foot setback, not to mention how, how tall.
To include changing the height and, and the footprint?
If you were to keep the same footprint three feet from the property line, that wouldn't meet the minimum setback for an accessory dwelling of five feet. And so that would require a special use permit to be converted into an accessory dwelling.
But we would be leaving the structure the same? It would just be putting in a stove or something like?
Right. The intent would be to keep the location and the footprint where it is, where, where, in such a place that you couldn't build a new structure today as an accessory dwelling. And so that would, that would require a special use permit. And the other instance for a special use permit as proposed would be for any RM district property, which, which is restricted to the internal form. So those are, those are the only two special use permit applications under the proposal. And as, as the code is written today, the, the planning commission would receive and review and make a recommendation to the, the BZA. That's, that's how it's in the zoning ordinance today. As the draft code in front of you today, there is an included amendment that would remove the planning commission and again streamline those applications to the BZA. Apologies if the planning commission was unified on, on one or the other. My interpretation was that it was not as...
No need for apologies on my count. I'm not even unified with myself sometimes. So...
And just to clarify this one more time, there is no special use permit option for a new structure that does not conform to the existing ordinance. Is that correct?
That's correct. That would require variance.
That would require variance. Gotcha.
Which we don't review. We don't review variances. So I think it's, in theory, someone could still do that. Someone could ask, so to your point, Mr. Duncan, I mean, someone gets, then they have, then they have to meet the variance criteria, which are difficult. But I, I don't know why, I mean, I already spoke on this. I don't know why we would call this out. We don't see that many of them. I don't think we're that difficult to, for one extra meeting. I don't think it's a huge expense. I think it's another check, it's another check and balance in the process for the community, a relatively minor one at that. If they're already committed, you know, to go into, you know, if we're going to leave in the requirement to go to the BZA, they're already in the public arena. Why not let this body who is responsible for adopting the, pardon, played a role in adopting the ordinance, have some input on looking at an application for somebody who's looking, again, to convert a structure that doesn't meet the rules, and whether, and provides some input on that. I don't see what the harm is in that. I don't think it's onerous for folks to come to us for one extra meeting. But that's my two cents on it. I don't think we should do that. I don't know why we'd call that out. In that sense, why don't we get rid of all special use permits that we review? Because it's too onerous. I mean, I don't know, you know, we don't see that many, but why don't we get rid of all of PC review? It's not required by state code. But I don't know why we'd call this out.
And again, thank you for that point. And again, if a, if an application for a new structure meets the requirements that we are hopefully going to pass, then the only, well, not the only, but the primary review opportunity is the stormwater runoff disturbance of 2,000 square feet, which touches off a stormwater flow assessment and so forth. If you are building and disturbing less than 2,000, then you, you don't even have to go through that. But just in the real practical world, it seems likely that somebody's going to go to the trouble to build something new. You know, it's going to be enough size that they probably will have to go through the stormwater review process, because there will be a disturbance, including the construction laydown area and so forth of 2,000 feet. Okay, well, I'm still...
Where is everybody on this? Can we, can we do a little poll on like, does the planning commission need to review special use permits? Aye? Yes?
Yes.
So we have one, two, three people? And no? Do we have a, who's on a no?
I, I don't have a strong opinion, but I would opt for more flexible, more flexibility and allowing the homeowner to go direct, streamlining it, the process. I could go the way, either way, but if pressed to a vote, I'd probably say we should probably maintain our ability to review.
Okay.
In the end, I think I'm going to agree with Mr. Stevens and retain our ability to review. And those circumstances, which I would hope would be, again, as I've said, you know, rarer than the norm. And I hope the norm will be, you know, submissions of applications that meet the standards that we have in mind.
Okay. Mr. Polinsky, did you have another comment? No? Okay, that's fine. Okay, Ms., I think we are, general consensus, I'm overruled. So we, we can, I think, strike that addition. And I, if you have advice on how to work this into the motion when we come to that, all of these details that were, these small changes that we're making at the end here, I'd appreciate that. I'm making some notes of some of them, but I just don't want to miss anything. Are there other things that staff particularly called out that you wanted us to discuss? We talked about the rear yard. We talked about special use permits. We talked about corner lots, which was not on your list, but is a good item. Something else?
Settle on the occupancy maximum number. I was quibbling over that with myself.
It's listed as three in the report.
Okay. So how many people do we have that would support an occupancy of four?
I would support occupancy of four, but I'm not hard over on that one.
Yeah, I'm, you know, I'm, I could go with three.
Yeah, four, I, the four felt, the four seems fine, but also not to the point where I wouldn't, wouldn't approve of three.
Three or four. I prefer four, but I, I can live with three.
We can always refer four to council. I mean, they're going to be chewing this over as well, so.
Well, it actually sounds from this straw poll we just took that people actually prefer, the majority prefer four.
They prefer three, to be on record.
Yeah, I think we, I, I mean, the council will work its own mind, but, you know, of course. But I feel like we ought to try to give as much guidance as we can push a majority to settle on.
Okay.
So I'm...
Three is the more conservative number, but I think realistically, we can all imagine easily situations where four would come up and you're not going to ask people to leave their yards, so.
That'd be my concern. I mean, I envision the four as, you know, a parent and a, three children. I don't know, it sounds like a lot for one parent, or maybe two parents and two children. Two parents and one kid who then have a new kid. That, that's my main concern. But, you know, it's a small town. Hopefully, we could work our way through that. So I guess I would, I'd go for three if the majority is for three with me.
I'm hearing a majority of four for four.
I don't know. I mean, I'd stick with the staff recommendation of three. I think that's reasonable. It's keeping something that's accessory as opposed to, you know, I mean, obviously, I mean, in a, correct, in theory, our ordinance allows very large numbers of people to occupy a dwelling. But remember that the three or the four, you know, they don't have to be related. So, you know, you could have four renters, all with a car, sharing that space, you know, the more you have. You're, you guys are assuming that it's a family with a baby, which could be. But it could also be four, you know, 20-somethings, you know, who are finding a cheap place to, to rent for a while, and they all work and they need a car. It can have impacts. So it's not out of line, I think, to keep something subordinate by having a smaller number. And again, I mean, this would be my theme of the whole thing, you know, there's no need to jump in head first into everything with ADUs. There's always a chance to reevaluate, and we can relax things if it turns out it's a huge impediment, and staff is getting lots of feedback from people that, hey, I mean, I can't have five people living in here. And they're hearing that day and night, but maybe better to err on the side of caution. And, you know, that's just my two cents. But I think three is fine.
All right. Sounds like maybe we'll stick with three. Is that where everybody is? I don't know.
I think that's fine. I think it's fine to stick with three.
People are a little ambivalent.
I did hear, I did hear five, talk, five commissioners talking about four, recommending four. I mean, I...
I think the way I phrase it was, I don't feel very, I think four would be fine, but also don't feel strongly about it. So it's less of a proposing fours, like, we should go forward and have a decision on that. It's more of a, I feel like I'm 50/50, and I think Mr. Krashen makes good points about being conservative and iterating our way into the right answer.
All right. Any other topics that we want to address? Anything else on anybody else's list? I think that was resolved last time. Separate addresses, it's sort of up to the homeowner. If they want to do it, they can do it, but they're not required.
They're not required to. Okay. I may have missed it, but on the corner lot, did, did we decide specifically on whether we wanted to adopt kind of what Arlington did with, with 10 feet minimums? Or have we kind of settled on the staff proposal at this point? I may have missed that.
We, I don't think we discussed the...
Oh, we still had that? Okay. Sorry.
Yeah, we hadn't gotten to sort of setbacks. So is there additional discussion on setbacks that we want to have at this point? Either for quarter lots, or any general comments that people want to make?
On the corner lots? I thought we had just, we decided we wanted...
Corner lots is not in front yard nor closer to the street than the primary dwelling.
Yeah, I thought we had talked about it. Right.
Yeah.
I thought that's what we agreed to.
Yeah, that's what we've agreed to.
That part, yes. Yeah.
Yeah. I'm, I'm, I, my instinct is to stick with the staff recommendation as far as setbacks.
For setbacks, I, I'm, I'm still of the mindset that this is written more towards the property owner who is wanting to add the AD and without regard to the directly adjacent property owners. If we allow a smaller setback than what is currently in the zoning, the neighboring properties do not get notified until a shovel is in the ground and they see it happening. They don't have the ability to see what the project is. They don't have the ability to be heard about what their concerns are on their property and the infringement upon their property rights. So I'm of the mindset that we leave the setbacks as they are in the code currently. I'm fine with the heights, but I think if you're gonna, if, if you have a, a requirement on your lot that is specific, then there's a special use permit process to accommodate that. It's not saying that you can't build an AD. It's saying be creative. And if you still have restrictions, there's a pathway to, to address those. And still be respectful of the neighboring interests, because there are neighboring properties that are also going to be impacted, and their property value is going to be impacted unfairly without notification. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other thoughts on that?
You know, it's, of course, an important point in our community, and that's why I keep asking about this disturbance standard. So, I mean, in my neighborhood, you know, house went down, big house went up in its place, disturbed, you know, everything. Runoff problems out the backyard impinged on my next door neighbor flooded their basement. You know, the current regime that we have, and this was all done in spite of various notifications and, you know, reviews and such and such, you know, the current, the current standard, the current approach that we have now is not, not flawless. I, I, again, would be interested in trying to encourage the building of structures that do not create those sorts of runoff problems right from the get-go. And therefore, I would like to encourage, you know, existing homes not to be torn down and replaced by, in my experience, enormous structures which are, you know, more likely to cause problems than any relatively small accessory dwelling building that would go up, particularly if that AD goes up after having survived the review process of the stormwater runoff, the disturbance of area. So, I mean, I, again, I guess I, I'm trying to look at the typical situation that I hope that we'll find, which is somebody submitting an application that meets the standards that we have, and will have to go through a disturbance, you know, consideration mitigation process, which does touch off the neighbors being notified. Am I right about how that's supposed to work?
But the limit is 2,500 square feet. The limits, you don't... Um, the limits, you don't trigger grading plan review unless you disturb-
Right, 2,500 square feet, but my understanding is that basically any construction of any consequence is going to consume 2,500 square feet because you-
It's the path to the structure.
You count the laydown, you count the constructs, you count, unless you have a-
Two, but-
Unless you have a driveway that, you know, you can park all that stuff on, but, you know, many people in town have single shot driveways and they can't, you know, they got to put the laydown construction materials in the, in the yard.
Well, but, you know, if someone's going up, you know, we're, again, we're talking about, we're allowing pretty tall structures, we're allowing 20 feet. You could get a thousand, you could get, you know, you could have a narrow footprint. People are very, builders and engineers are very good at, if they can at all avoid the grading plan, they're really good at coming in at like 2475, 2490, because it's a big expense and it's an hassle, and if, if, I, I think our ordinance is, this is fairly permissive, I think a lot of folks would be under that. Because, you know, unless they're building something really large, um, and really far back from their house, and they're building like a paved pathway to get there, I mean,
That's, that's exactly the kind of scenario that I would imagine.
I don't know if that would be the most common, though, I think there'd be many, many that would be under the 2,500 square foot, especially if they were vertical, they were going up.
I guess neither of us can really know the answer to that, but yeah, my, my vision of, of, of the frequency, I mean, we're, we're not going to see these in Greenway Downs, the, the lots are just not big enough, I mean, they're, they're just flat out not big enough. And, you know, you might see it on a lot that's my size, which is 11,000 square feet, but it's still pretty tight. You know, the most likely presence of these things is going to be on lots that have a little more elbow room, and they will do exactly what you said, they'll have a pathway of some sort that would meet this disturbance, uh, and touch off the notification that neighbors would receive and would be able to comment, uh, on. But, you know, again, I'm just going on my personal experience, I don't, I don't, I, I can't speak to the height question, I mean, I, I'm, again, my personal experience, and one of the reasons I'm for this, is that my perception is that it's not so much the height of the, it's not so much the setback, the distance from my lot line to whatever structures on the other side of the fence, it's, you know, the height is, the height that we have set in the language that we have here is, to me, satisfactory and better than what's likely to happen if we don't pass this, because what's going to happen if we don't pass this is the house is going to get torn down and replaced by, uh, a enormous, uh, single-family home with six bedrooms and eight baths, and it's going to loom over everybody's yard in the vicinity.
Yeah, kind of driven by, kind of the policy, uh, issues on this, on this issue, which, uh, it's kind of a funny way to go about it, because we're talking about a technical issue, but yet kind of larger policy issues drive it. One is certainly just a, the housing crisis in general, and the need for, for more housing space. Uh, I think we all have to be very aware of the, just the huge problems that not only Falls Church, but places throughout the country have, uh, with housing right now. Accessory dwellings, of course, is just one small little tool, but I think it's one that we want to take advantage of, and, uh, if we allow accessory dwellings, but we put the regulations such that people just aren't going to build them, uh, then it's not really going to, going to help much. And I think we saw this with Arlington, when they came and spoke, uh, here, uh, through our speaker series about five years ago, I think, and at that point, they had almost uh, no acceptance of their acceler- uh, accessory dwellings, and so they went back and, uh, kind of fine tuned their code, and they have what we see today, and they are getting, uh, accessory dwellings. I think at the level and at the pace, which, you know, more or less we would be happy with, uh, as well, which is not so, so much that it overwhelms communities, but, and not like it was previously where they were getting no response, you know, and I would look at Fairfax County, where they made the, the regulations and they got, what, five? You know, for a county as large as, as Fairfax, uh, five detached units is, is not very much, so, you know, I, I, that's why I'm inclined to say, let's go with what more of an industry standard is, and what we've seen, uh, work in Alexandria and, and Arlington with the five-foot setback in very limited, uh, conditions. We've kind of drawn back from that in several situations. We started out with, I think, a, a more permissive situation, and we've come back both on the heights and I think on the setbacks, and, and by the way, I do appreciate, uh, staff for adding the sliding scale, I think that's a, uh, a, a good, good addition as well. But anyway, because of those policy concerns, I think that's what, what drives me to, to still want to stay with the staff proposal on those limited conditions where a five-foot setback would apply.
Thank you, Mr. Stevens. Any other comments, Mr. Gravinsky?
I just want to echo what Mr. Stevens said, I couldn't have said it better, I think he, uh, it's spot on, I think what we need to do is, if we support ADs, we have to make the ordinance, we have to write the ordinance in such a way that they're viable for the homeowner, and, uh, if we're putting too many restrictions, uh, on the homeowner so that they can't actually fit one on their property, um, that's a, that's a problem. So, I, I would, I would stick with the staff recommendation, I think they, as Mr. Stevens points out, we've already made a couple of concessions that I think were well thought through, but, um, the five-foot setback is, uh, is, uh, probably the preferable way to make ADs viable for most properties in Falls Church.
Thank you. Any other comments?
On the setback? I mean, I'll vehemently disagree with the last two speakers, um, with all due respect. Five feet is very close, and I don't think that's a policy decision about the housing crisis, when we're talking about an additional five foot, so like 10 foot in R1B, or 15 foot in R1A, to provide room for buffering, for planting, um, I don't think that is in any way meaning that me or anyone else who's pushing for a greater setback is somehow against providing housing, and frankly, I'm a little insulted by the insinuation that if you don't support a shallower setback, you're somehow against the affordable housing crisis in this region, because I don't think that's true at all, and I'm actually frankly tired of hearing that, um, not just on this commission, but kind of in the general sort of zeitgeist, um, in the community and certain circles, that somehow if you don't open up your ordinance and sort of pull out all the stops, you're against providing housing for people? That's nonsense. This city has provided hundreds of multifamily units. We just did the T zones, which are providing dozens of very much not affordable, but new townhouses. For our two square miles, I think we're punching way above our weight in the affordable housing crisis in the region, way above our weight. So, I'm tired of hearing that, and I, no disrespect to anybody personally, but I've heard that argument, and I'm just frankly tired of it, I think zoning is a very, you know, we're trying to craft an ordinance and create a good result, a dozen negatively affect adjacent property owners, and five feet is close, but I don't, and we can debate the, we can debate a number based on design, it really comes, that, that's a design issue, in my opinion, but I don't think it's a policy issue if you're pushing for some reasonable safeguards to create a good design and a good end result that doesn't negatively impact adjacent property owners. So, I don't like staff's proposal for the five feet, I've said that every time, again, no disrespect to staff either, I understand they, they started at that, tried to be generous, but I, I'm not going to support that. I think we need, if you're building something like that, you should meet the existing side yard setback that the main dwelling needs to meet. I don't think that's a hardship, I don't think it's going to create difficulty in people doing it, and it seems like a small number, but that additional five foot in R1B allows for the planting, it allows for just a little more separation on lots that are already fairly dense, um, and that's, that's how I feel about that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Mr. Duncan?
Could I just thank you, uh, for recognizing me again, this will be the last time I, um, and, uh, I just wanted to say, if we're closing out here before we start wrestling with the language, uh, two things, one, thank you to staff for conducting an extremely thorough process, I mean, it's, it's important, as we've seen in other jurisdictions, that we get the process right here, and staff has really gone the extra mile in every instance to answer our questions, you know, respond to our concerns, uh, you know, even up here to the last minute, you know, something gets brought up that we think we've covered, and, and I think we will, you know, have covered it in the end. Uh, and I just want to say for the record that, uh, I'm proud of what staff has done to consult with the community and bring its opinions and views into our attention and from us to the council also. And second, I want to thank my colleagues on the planning commission, uh, this is exactly what the planning commission is supposed to be all about. The council has so many, uh, responsibilities, it's hard to really sink into any one in particular, so, you know, the fact that we've rolled up our sleeves and had really very extremely detailed and substantive conversations also speaks well to the process and leadership of the chair and the vice chair, and, and I've certainly learned, uh, you know, from my colleagues, uh, useful information, and it's caused me to, you know, trim my sails a little bit on some things that I thought I preferred at first. So, I do want to thank every individual on the planning commission. You know, my, my vote is driven by the language that's at the top of the resolution, allowing for more diverse housing types and strengthening housing opportunities for residents at different life stages, from first-time homebuyers to downsizers. It is, as one of the citizens brought up, important that we take all, uh, quality, uh, community quality of life issues into consideration, and we do, you know, pay great attention to green space. I spent four and a half million dollars a year, hard-earned taxpayer dollars, to set aside for the fellow's property for, you know, an arboreal landscape rather than let it develop into single-family homes, uh. Uh, I'm, I'm trying to do something with my vote that's consistent with what I perceive has been going on here for quite some time in some small ways, you know? Some, many years ago, the Snyder family, uh, wanted to develop their property, their back, backyard property into a house for, you know, one of the kids, and that was very controversial at the time, I voted for that because I thought it was a good, reasonable use. The Hiscott family wanted to build a structure for elderly parents, and I supported that even though, you know, it involved the city seeding a paper street, and there was some opposition to that, but I thought it was for the greater good. As Mr. Krasner suggested, T zones was a vote for me for, not for attainable housing, anything that's in the vicinity of a million dollars is, got to be defined as attainable now, and the T zones vote was that, the multi-use buildings that he referred to, certainly, I think I supported every single one of them. So, what I feel like I'm doing is consistent with, you know, the record that I've tried to establish and, and have seen others, uh, you know, articulate more, uh, clearly than I can, that, that we do have, although we're small, and it seems, you know, uh, some citizens have said, why are we even bothering to do this if we only get a couple a year? Well, in Falls Church, you know, a place like the railroad cottages may seem small, but that's a big deal, it's got nationwide attention and, and rewards, awards and recognition is, is sort of, you know, the kind of attainable housing, I voted for that, too. That was very controversial. So, I'm going to vote for what we've, I think, hopefully compromised on and agreed on with all those things in mind, and, uh, and commend, uh, the discussions that we had to the council, which will have another month or so to chew over this and, uh, and take their crack at it. So, thank you for indulging me, a little personal remarks there.
Thank you, Mr. Duncan. Any other comments from the commissioners?
I have one.
Oh, please.
I also want to just, um, thank staff, the, um, the online, all the outreach that you guys have been trying to do, it's, it was, it's been really difficult because the meetings that we, we've had and the listening sessions that we've had have not been well attended in public, so it was really important that, that online survey went out so that we could read some feedback, because I think that was the first time that we were seeing people actually saying, this is how I feel about it, even though they're not physically sitting here, and I think it's important that we recognize that our community is pretty split on this item, so, thank you.
Yeah, I just remind us that it's an opt-in survey, and so you can't really take those, uh, comments and assume that that's like a scientific poll of the community. I know staff, I also want to compliment staff on all of the hard work on this, and, um, all of the research that you've done, every question that we've asked, you've come back next time with an answer, so thank you for all of that hard work, and I align myself with, um, Mr. Stevens' comments and Mr. Duncan's comments, I think if you believe there's a housing crisis, including right here in Falls Church, um, then you want to kind of do whatever you can to, um, help increase, uh, supply. So, that is why I'm going to support this initiative, and, um, I hope my fellow commissioners will as well.
Just to let us remember, I have one other comment I wanted to make, I apologize for going twice, but, um, just on the owner occupancy issue, I know our city attorney's here, and I promised her I would, just something I said in the previous hearing, our work session, um, just to, on the record, I just wanted to make it clear that I made some comments about, um, you know, chatting with other attorneys, I didn't get any formal outside legal advice, I merely had informal conversations with colleagues and acquaintances I know in the Northern Virginia area that, you know, happened to be land use and zoning attorneys and planners, and, um, that was it, it was more like informal conversation, I didn't get any actual legal advice from anyone outside the city, and so, I appreciate the work that Ms. Gillette's done on, uh, providing us a well-thought-out legal, uh, doc, legal memo that explains her position on, on the owner occupancy. I, I'd still disagree, at the end of the day, I still think we can do it, because I think that the law is, is, I mean, I, staff used the word ambiguous, I mean, I would say that, one of the speakers mentioned there hasn't been any jurisdiction in Virginia that's been sued over that jurisdiction, even our, our, apparently our, our favorite neighbor Arlington, uh, has it, so does Alexandria, um, so does Fairfax, and so does many, many others, I won't list all the jurisdictions that have the owner occupancy requirement, but they all have it, um, haven't been sued about it, and I, I think that's, it's a calculated risk, I guess, if, if, if there's some uncertainty about whether or not you're enabled under state code to do something, but, as I said last time, we would certainly be in very good company, um, and I don't see the need to strike out on our own on that point, I think there's good reasons behind it, people don't, maybe not agree with me, at least some people on the commission don't agree with me on the need for it, but clearly, many, many jurisdictions, you know, the majority of the decision-makers in many other jurisdictions did agree with me, because it's, they have that restriction to kind of, again, make sure that there's a owner occupied, one or the other, not, not both, of the units, um, and so I'll throw that out there, council can chew on it, I know, I don't think there's support in the commission to include that, but I just wanted to make it clear, because, you know, that I didn't get any formal outside advice, but just my opinion after having informal conversations was that we are taking a, maybe a small risk, but one that would, um, you know, that might be worth taking, given the potential downsides, um, of having no owner occupancy requirement and being an island that doesn't have that rule amongst all our neighbors, that's it.
Thank you for that clarification, Mr. Krasner, and I'd also like to thank Ms. Gillette for all of her, um, good advice on that topic. Okay, if there are no further comments, um, do we have a motion to, does somebody want to make the motion? I have a list, I think, of three things that we've agreed that we might want to add to that motion, that I could provide to the motion maker, if that would be helpful.
Do we, do we, do we do your additions first?
What's the best-
And include them in the motion?
We make the motion first, and then-
So that we don't have to amend the motion?
And then I can make a friendly amendment with the three-
That would, that would be the best, yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Are we voting at this point on the motion at the beginning of this?
That's correct.
Can I make one?
Well, you can, if, if somebody would like to make the motion, then you can make a, um-
Oh, I see.
A suggestion for a change after the motion is on the table, or, right?
I so move, uh, if I have to read the whole thing, do you want to do that now, or do you want to do it after you have-
Please do it.
Incorporated your-
No, 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 I, it would go at the end.
Okay. All right, Mr. Trainer, keep up with me on the screen so that I can get this right. Whereas the city council in its calendar year 2024-25 priorities work plan established certain goals for the city of Falls Church, including allowing for more diverse housing types and strengthening housing opportunities for residents at different life stages from first-time homebuyers to downsizers, and, whereas Chapter 10 of the City of Falls Church Comprehensive Plan Housing in Complete Community recommends strategies for addressing housing diversification and growth, including accessory dwellings, and whereas accessory dwellings are an underrepresented share of the city's housing stock with potential to contribute to housing diversification goals included- potential to contribute to housing diversification goals included in the Comprehensive Plan and City Council's Priorities Plan. And whereas on November 25th, 2024, the City Council referred ordinance TO 24-17 Amending Zoning Ordinance Regulations Related to Accessory Dwellings to the Planning Commission for comment. And whereas the City Charter, Section 17 dot 13 mandates that zoning text amendments be referred to the Planning Commission by the City Council for review and recommendation. And whereas the Planning Commission, competing with the storm outdoors, whereas the Planning Commission held required meetings with proper notice during its meetings of December 4th, 2024, January 15th, 2025, January 22nd, 2025, February 19th, 2025, and March 5th, 2025. Now, therefore, I move that the Planning Commission recommends City Council adopt TO 24-17 Amending Zoning Regulations Related to Accessory Dwellings in the City of Falls Church.
Thank you, Mr. Duncan. Is there a second? Is there a second on the motion?
I will second it.
Thank you. Any discussion? This is the point where we could suggest changes. I have, I think, three things that I've recorded that we might want to add to the end of the motion. I think Mr. Kravinsky might have a suggestion. And Mr. Duncan, you would be accepting those suggestions?
The only suggestion that I would make is on that first whereas, I would probably end that sentence at strengthening housing opportunity for residents at different stages, life stages, period. I'm not sure that this AD proposal does anything to, for first time home buyers. And I think it's important that we don't misrepresent what this is. In fact, I could probably, I mean, it's certainly doing, it's certainly a benefit for renters, but I don't think it necessarily helps first time home buyers. In fact, I could argue that by increasing the value of these properties with this ordinance, it may actually be counterproductive to first time home buyers. So I, I would probably suggest we put a period there and just say that strengthening housing opportunities for residents at different life stages.
And does the maker of the motion approve?
I take your point and I, at the end of the day, would approve of that change. I, I did see myself in that statement because when we first moved here in 1985, we were first time home buyers and had we had the ability at that stage to build a accessory unit and rent it out, we could have used the income to have, you know, gotten by as struggling young marriages. But, you know, that's, that's three levels of, of sophistication that your, your point is probably more important, which is we don't want to misrepresent this or overpromise what goods it's going to deliver if we pass it. So the maker of the motion accepts that change.
And the seconder?
Yes, I accept that.
Okay, thank you. So I think the three changes that we discussed, and I, I think we would put this after, and I'm open to advice here, but after the now therefore I move, I think you could add with the following amendments or with the following, what do we normally say? Let's start with the
Something like, right, with the following, you know,
With the following.
Like proposed, or recommended revisions.
You've recommended adjustments.
Let's say with the following revisions. That's great. One, staff shall include
Sorry, did you want that at the beginning or?
No, after the now therefore I move.
Yep.
Could you put it after that?
Yeah, it feels like it would go at the end of the sentence.
Yep.
In the City of Falls Church, with the following revisions. No.
There. One. Staff shall include draft code language indicating new detached accessory dwellings shall not be located in the front yard nor closer to the street than the primary dwelling. I think that just got dropped at some point, Jack.
Yeah. Indicating new detached accessory dwellings shall not
Shall not be located in the front yard nor closer to the street than the primary dwelling. Two, staff shall amend draft code language to remove the requirement that detached accessory dwellings comply with rear yard 30% coverage requirements. Three, and three. Great. Staff shall amend draft code language to ensure special use permits are reviewed by the Planning Commission. I believe that's where the majority of the commissioners were on those three items.
That's what I have.
Okay. Does that look good to the maker of the motion?
We'll have to amend it for council.
And the seconder?
Yes, I accept.
Sorry, I wasn't microphone. The maker of the motion accepts those.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the motion?
Can you clarify number two? Is that shall amend the draft code language to remove the requirement that the detached ADs comply with rear yard coverage requirements?
Thirty percent, yeah, we're missing the
We want to maintain the existing.
No, that was not the agreement of the majority.
Taking that off?
Existing, yes, thirty percent.
Yeah, the existing is the, sorry, but yeah, we're missing the 30%.
Thirty percent, yeah.
Should read comply with rear yard 30% coverage requirements. Rear yard 30% coverage requirements.
Are we going to put an upper limit on that or we're just saying they could, they don't, they have no requirements, they could cover 100%?
I don't think we've discussed an upper limit.
So we're going from 30 to 100? Just, just asking.
Yes.
Yes, you want them to cover 100% of the rear with an ADU?
I think that would be a very long skinny ADU if somebody wanted to do that.
Well, they just, we're talking about the rear setback area.
Well, I mean, the owner may decide to have an accessory structure there anyway, right? That's their choice.
There's the 25% building coverage, 35% impervious. I'm sorry, other way, other way around, yeah.
Well, there's still the lot coverage in the, right, the overall for the lot.
Correct.
This is just for the rear and it's worded very strangely. I don't know what this, I'd love to know more about the history of this provision of the code. I'm sure it goes back many decades, so I'd love to know where it, you know, what, you know, how long it's been there, but
It's hard to know what the
It's the rear setback. I'm just saying, Mr. Trainer, this is just for the rear, so right now, today, pre-ADU or in changes to ADU, the rear setback is limited to 30%. You can only cover 30% of it with any accessory structure, so with a shed.
That's right. The, the required rear yard setback area has a maximum 30% coverage of, by accessory buildings.
Accessory buildings, right.
So that's separate from lot coverage. It's more about orientation and placement on the lot.
Having things in the back.
Yeah.
And it's separate from backyard, right? And backyard could be bigger. This is, this is a construct within that.
Now we're saying the entire area, the closest, which is the closest to the rear lot line, the closest 25 or
Right.
Thirty-five, what is it in R, is it in R1A? What is the rear yard, what's the rear setback in R1A?
Forty?
I think it's 40 because I think it's 30 in R1B and 40 in R1A.
So we're saying they can now cover 100% of that, in theory. I don't know if it'll happen.
I don't know that that would be possible with the other requirements that they have for building and impervious coverage.
Because we don't know.
Did you have a change you wanted to make to the motion?
Well, I, I mean, I can't support that for sure. I mean, I, it was just, I mean, I'll say my piece. I mean, I'm actually kind of at a tough point because, you know, I've been talking about ADUs, you know, it's something I'm familiar with and I think they're a good thing in, you know, in general. I mean, I think they are and I think allowing some additional flexibility for folks compared to what our ordinance is today is good. Like I've always agreed with council that, like, the general intent of like trying to relook at our rules, which are old and out of date and maybe think of ways to, you know, make them work better and be a little more flexible is good. But I, I still think that we've, we've kind of gone too far, in my view, on leaning, you know, leaning too much in favor of those who might want to build one at the expense of those who might have to live next to one and those who don't want to build one, you know, and then zoning, you know, and then planning, it's all about that balance, you know, we're trying, that's the whole point, I think, of zoning really, is to put some reasonable regulations on what someone can do with their private property. There's been a lot of talk about, on the commission about property rights and what people can do with their property. One of the reasons zoning exists is to put some reasonable checks on that in the interest of making sure what you do on your private property doesn't negatively impact your neighbor on their side of the line. And, you know, in that spirit, I think that we've gone too far with this set of, this set of revisions in favor of those who want to build these things at the expense of people who are going to, who may now have to endure a negative impact because we've allowed them to build too tall, too close, not enough screening, you know, covering the entire rear setback and other things. So sort of in that spirit, I think we've gone too far. I mean, the owner occupancy thing, I probably could have gotten past that, although I do think there's merit to it. If that was my only thing I thought we were missing, I probably could get past that and we can kind of see how it goes as an experiment. But I, I do think that the setbacks are too close and I think this change, which is something we didn't really talk about until today, like we kind of got, I mean, I guess it came up last time. I think it's, again, it's like we're kind of like blowing up, you know, things in the ordinance without really knowing what we're doing. I mean, you know, as someone who's worked with zoning ordinances for a long time, I will tell you that the road, you know, to a good code is paved, you know, or to, to hell rather, you know, is paved with good intentions of writing code. And that's why usually it's good to move slowly, make incremental changes, because you can always adjust, but once the genie's out of the bottle, once the toothpaste is out of the tube, it's really hard to, you know, then make up for the fact when, you know, something gets built that is kind of egregious that we didn't anticipate. I mean, I, I'll even use the T zones as an example of that where we tried, you know, it's hard writing good code and we kind of, I think, also aired a little bit on the side of, of being a little too flexible and by right. And we got some, you know, layouts in those projects that are, you know, I think are not really great. But in any event, so I think certainly, I mean, I'm, I don't think I can support it for those reasons, but if the, if there's, the consensus is that you guys are going to do this, I think that you should put an upper limit on the 30% instead of just saying you can do whatever you want back there. That just assumes that that part of the ordinance was just totally out to lunch and maybe there, like as I said before, there might be some merit from a stormwater perspective or just again, having a lot of building in bulk right up against someone's property line because what's, you know, on the other side of the line could be very different on the other lot. It might not be what that, that other person considers the way back. I don't care what happens back there. You know, anyhow, so that's my caveat. If you're going to do that, my recommendation would be that you put an upper limit on it, but I don't think I can support the whole thing unfortunately, which kind of pains me because I like ADUs as a concept and I think they do have a place in the city for sure. I just think we've gone too far as an opening kind of like attempt at doing this and I think that we may see some negative consequences as a result. I hope we don't, but I can't support it. But my recommendation would be to put a limit on that.
Thank you, Mr. Krasner. Any further discussion?
Oh, go ahead.
I know I'm the second, second in the motion and the seconder, but I'm, I don't think it would stop me from voting entirely against this, but I do think that it is a, it is a risky choice to get rid of this particular piece of the code without really knowing exactly why the code is there. I defer to the wisdom of the group. Like if everybody else is in favor of it, I don't think we should stop because of it. But I do think there is an opportunity here to not necessarily take this piece out and then find a, find a future time to do it when we've studied it more, understand more why this particular piece is in. The first and the third, I'm fine with the setbacks I've seen in person, I'm fine with, but I think this particular, number two, item number two in this is aggressive without really knowing exactly why it's there.
Go ahead.
Thank you. I'm, I'm in agreement with Commissioner Krasner on this one and I think there's a good reason why it's in that code. There's a good reason why it hasn't been changed in many, many years. And I think it's wise to leave some guardrails on this proposal and if we're not seeing the development of ADs that we want to see, then we have an opportunity to tweak certain things. I think by taking all the guardrails off, we are really weighing this to the interest of the owner who is wanting to build it at the expense of everybody around them. I am for accessory dwellings completely, but in this state, I, I'm conflicted because I, I have to vote against this. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments, Mr. Stevens?
Yeah, on a slightly different topic, I don't know, did we get enough into the whole discussion of corner lots and whether a 10-foot minimum would be something that is advised? I, I could live with that. I'm kind of curious to hear what others may think about that.
I'm happy to stick with the staff recommended, recommendations for five foot for 15 and, and 10 foot for 20. That's my view.
Takes care of that.
Well, I mean, if nobody else has any comments. Mr. Duncan.
Number one would take care of any concern that I would, I would have certainly. No closer to the street than the primary dwelling addresses the concern that somehow the accessory would be closer to the street than the primary house, as I understand that's the point of that.
Yeah, that, that's correct. Mr. Kravinsky?
Just to clarify, I thought that's what one said. We, we're
I think Mr. Stevens is also asking about the location of the AD and how close it is to the property line, not the front setback, but the
Oh, I see.
Yeah, should it be more than five feet on a corner lot? I'm, I'm comfortable with, with staff's recommendation of five feet for 15, 10 feet for 20. That's my view.
And I'm comfortable with those too. The only other comment that I was going to make was on two, just in terms of coverage requirements, we, we kind of have set a default coverage requirement by limiting the dimensions to 1,000 square feet. So you're, you really aren't going to be able to, I mean, I guess it depends on the yard, but most yards, you're not going to be able to get to 100% of the yard, you know, with a thousand square foot
Correct.
Lot or dwelling.
Lots on my street are 40 feet wide. Just throw that out there.
Any other discussion on the motion? I, like, I liked Mr. Stevens' comments earlier about like, I'd like for us to be learning from Arlington and maybe start out more about where they are today so we can actually get some of these built rather than take a more cautious approach and then iterate because that also takes additional time, staff time, and in the meantime, people are building ADs that are maybe not really what they would prefer to build on their properties and maybe for not a good reason. So I'm, I'm comfortable with this and willing to support it. Is there any other discussion or are we ready to move to a vote? No other discussion. Uh, Mr. Trainer, can you call the roll please?
Mr. Polinski? Sorry, the response is I vote yes or no at this point. Or is it, okay, I vote yes. Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Mr. Krasner?
Nope.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Ms. Friedlander?
No.
Mr. Kravinsky?
Yes.
Ms. Koma?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you, the ayes have it. Motion passes.
Thank you. Thank you for all your hard work on this. Mr. Stevens?
Just a quick comment. Uh, first of all, I want to thank all the commissioners for, for your excellent, insightful comments and, uh, I think even though we, we differ on this, I just want to make clear, I know that you're all very much concerned about housing and so, uh, I apologize if anything I said, uh, you know, was interpreted as, you know, trying to imply that you're not in favor of, you know, addressing housing, uh, or other key issues, you know, I think we just have legitimate issues where we might differ, but, uh, but they're all well thought out and, uh, I feel privileged to be, uh, be in your presence. Thanks.
I agree. I think we're all trying to do what's best for the community.
And I just want to say thanks to everybody who came to offer comment tonight and everybody who's offered comment during the entire process. Uh, the more people are involved, the better off we are. So, thanks for making comment.
Great. Seconded. Thank you all. Uh, okay, so I think we can move on to our second action item with, which is another public hearing, uh, for the capital improvement plan. Um, Mr. Fuller, are you introducing this item or should we just invite Ms. Sobsey up?
How do we always do this to Ms. Sobsey? She always has to come on these nights where we like make her wait for hours and we're all tired and worn out.
Apologies, Ms. Sobsey.
I feel like this is like...
Yeah, it's not 11 at least.
This is at least the fourth or fifth time I recall, like, you having to sit around for hours when we have controversial item before the CIP. But I guess you...
I learned a lot.
Yeah. So, I pay apologies to Ms. Sobsey for making, next time she gets to go first. I mean, next year can we say Ms. Sobsey gets to go first for the CIP staff?
Second.
Promise her that she can go first for the, uh...
I was first at the work session.
Yeah.
And you were second.
That's true.
I just think of many years going back where you've been like waiting around till late hours.
Yeah, that's true.
So, thank you for that.
So, I will introduce, um, so Caitlin Sobsey's here tonight as the CIP coordinator. Uh, this is your, um, final public hearing tonight on the CIP. Andy Young, the deputy city manager, is also here, um, in, in support and available for questions as well. Um, so I'm going to turn it over, um, to the CIP coordinator now. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, good evening, Planning Commission. Uh, my name is Caitlin Sobsey, CIP coordinator, um, and I'm here tonight again for the fiscal year 2026 to 2031 Capital Improvements Program or CIP. Um, I was here last meeting, the work session on February 19th. Oh, I'm going to do the, um, I'm going to do overview of the first few slides, so can we pull up those slides too? Sorry.
Yeah.
Um, I was here last at the work session on February 19th where, uh, we presented the proposed fiscal year 26 to 31 CIP. Uh, the CIP is a strategic, that's perfect, um, a strategic, uh, six-year strategic plan that drives investment in, uh, the city's public infrastructure and facilities, serving as a road, roadmap and reflection of the city's long-term vision, needs and priorities. I'm just going to go through a few of these slides. Um, since the last time I was here, no content changes have been made to the CIP document or to the slides. I just want to give an overview for the public, um, following, um, yeah, I'm just going to give a, a high-level overview of the CIP. Um, this year's proposed six-year budget totals 148 million. Um, the full CIP document, which includes, um, funding details, program summaries and the project, uh, the detailed project sheets is available at the link there, which is, um, fallschurchva.gov/cip and was presented to the planning commissioners, commissioners in, um, their, uh, CIP notebooks. Um, as I mentioned, we haven't made any changes since then. Um, on the next slide, I think there's also a high-level, uh, overview of the, um, proposed project uses and also the funding sources for the 148 million. Um, last time I was here, there were a lot of fair questions about the, um, status of federal grant funding, um, and I mentioned that of the proposed six-year budget, 46 million, um, the total grants was 46 million, um, 12.3 million of those are federally funded, which is 20, makes up 27% of our grants in the six-year plan. Um, since I was here last, staff has done, um, some more analysis of our existing prior year appropriations, um, for federal grants. Um, that includes all existing or new projects that we haven't started yet. That totals, um, 50 million. Um, that's something that you might hear in the coming weeks as we talk about sort of our, our exposure for, uh, federal grants and the status of that, um, which is still sort of to be determined. 24 million of that 50 is for transportation projects, um, and, uh, yeah, the rest is, is a lot in facilities and the schools. Um, right now, we still don't know the status of that. We haven't, staff hasn't, um, received any indication that there, any of those funds are on hold or frozen right now, um, and we're continuing to, um, implement projects and, and, um, submit reimbursements. So, we'll, um, continue to monitor that situation, um, and, uh, give you any updates, uh, if necessary. Um, on the next slide, uh, we talked about last, uh, last time, we talked about fiscal year 25 accomplishments and completed projects or highlighted projects. Um, for tonight's meeting, I've provided Mr. Fuller with the CIP quarterly update that was presented last month. It's the February 2025 quarterly CIP update of all active and ongoing projects. Um, that should be in your materials tonight for the, um, director's report as an attachment. I'm happy to, um, speak to that if, if needed, um, but I wanted to mention that on the next slide. Um, yeah, just to quickly highlight the staff priorities going into this year's development of the CIP, our staff priorities were effective and realistic project delivery, infrastructure reinvestment, multimodal transportation, um, and affordable housing. Um, staff feels that those priorities and the input from the planning commission, um, align with the, uh, proposed CIP that we, um, developed, which delivers key investments in walkability, bike infrastructure, uh, infrastructure reinvestment and transportation facilities and utilities, um, in alignment with energy efficiency and affordability goals. Um, I think I'm going to skip ahead to the second to last slide, maybe, just to talk a little bit about, um, next steps. Again, the request tonight for the planning commission is, um, to conduct a public hearing and move to recommend the proposed CIP for approval. The next steps after that will be on March 24th. The city manager and the school superintendent will present their proposed, um, fiscal year 26 budgets to city council. CIP will be included in that. Um, the CIP, um, is always included in the budget ordinance that it's adopted. There will likely be a budget, um, work session in April, I think April 7th, tentatively, for the CIP specifically, um, and then we have anticipated budget adoption on May 12th of 2025. I think that's it for me, so if you all have any questions, I'm ready.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Sobsey. Uh, any questions? Mr. Duncan?
Thank you, Caitlin. Um, Ms. Sobsey, sorry. Um, last time we were here, I'd ask a question about, uh, Cherry Hill Farmhouse and where that stands as we approach the 250th, uh, observance, uh, you know, of, of all the fine properties that we have here in town, the most historic secular property at least, and the oldest is Cherry Hill Farmhouse. So, I'm curious if you know anything, uh, updated about the timetable for getting whatever work needs to be done there done sooner rather than in the out-out year.
Right. I think I mentioned at the last meeting at the work session, and it's also noted in the quarterly update, we did not receive the grant for Cherry Hill Farmhouse for the HVAC and roof replacement that we had applied for. Um, they did extend that funding, um, they added some more funds, but they don't apply to Northern Virginia. Um, so, uh, right now, I, um, Facilities has told us that, um, the, so the foundation work is funded in fiscal year 25 and that's ongoing. Um, so foundation is, is underway, I mean, not under construction, but in, in progress, um, and funded. The, um, these, the roof and HVAC system at this point are in acceptable condition, um, and still working. Um, we plan to propose that as maybe, um, a project that will be funded through a, a future budget amendment or a budget surplus or any other funding opportunity that comes up, hopefully sooner than, um, next year when we're here for the CIP again.
Any other questions? Mr. Stevens?
Okay, thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry, were you done, Mr. Duncan?
No, I, when we get to the point of making a motion, I, I don't know, I would like to call, call that out as a priority.
As an item.
As an item for special attention during, you know, the, the fiscal year that we're talking about right now, uh, given the availability of, of funds for that purpose.
Even more compelling if, uh, if you've been down in the basement like I have to see the existing HVAC piece of equipment that's there.
Really?
It's like a tank.
Yeah, well, okay, good. I think that's, uh, the other, one other thing, if I could, Madam Chair, the, there was discussion at a recent council member, council meeting about, uh, the, uh, utility poll on North Washington, which people continue to run into bringing the power grid down all across City Hall and Governor's Court and, you know, substantial impact. Uh, I just wondered, uh, you know, if there's any nearer term remedies to that that are being considered, uh, short of waiting for the great streets or whatever the project is that's on North Washington that we're calling now, that could address that problem, even if temporarily, to avoid the frightening frequency of accidents there, which have an impact on the whole community?
Nothing to report right now, not that I'm aware of. I know that there's been discussion of that this week and last about some temporary solutions that we could employ to prevent it from happening again. No, no other development at this time. Yeah.
Yeah, well, Ms. Ms. Flynn, who lives in the neighborhood, was offering fairly compelling testimony to, and, you know, the, the explanation was that it's, it would be a public safety hazard to install jersey barriers or whatever, but it's a public safety hazard to, and then the last time compounding the problem was the backup generator in the city hall was down for regular maintenance, so, I mean, we really were caught. I see Andy getting up, maybe he's got something to say.
It's the pole in front of that, just so everyone knows, it's the pole that's in front of that lying construction or something, that little, next to the Columbia Church, right? It's like the pole that's right in front of the, that little, I guess it was a dwelling years ago, but it's like a little, yeah, contractor's office.
Past week's actually a different pole than has been struck, the, that we had the adventures with last year. Um, so I think the one thing I would add to, to what, um, Ms. Sobsey was talking about is, you know, our folks are having some ongoing discussions with Dominion about alternate routes of kind of, you know, feeding power to this part of the city so that it isn't kind of a single point of failure. So, it's Dominion, you know, and so it's kind of ongoing discussions, but that is one of the solutions that's, uh, being discussed.
Since the church was renovated, some people's hands are concrete.
Thank you. Any other questions, Mr. Duncan?
Okay, well, again, another area of special focus and lest we forget the light at Gresham 2, which also remains interesting, uh, remains an item of interest.
Thank you for that. Uh, I, I did have another item, if, if I'm next.
Uh, yes.
Yeah, I'm done.
Uh, I just had one item I wanted to, uh, touch on with you, and that's the, uh, rooftop solar for the Aurora House, uh, and thank you for putting into the, uh, proposal here that, um, the initial cost will be recovered from solar through, uh, savings in, uh, utility costs. So, that's, that's something that, uh, I'd asked for in the past and there it is, so thank you very much for that. The thing that I'm still kind of trying to grasp is why it's in there as unfunded. Is that a staff recommendation that it not be funded at this time or am I maybe just misreading that? And I'm puzzled because, uh, of the fact that the, the costs will be recovered. So, I mean, they're really, it's not an outlay like other items in the CIP, so why this one would, would pop up as unfunded, I guess I'm, it would be good to hear your explanation or Mr. Young's.
It's a tough one. I think the answer is, yeah, it, it is based on a staff recommendation, um, based on available funding and, and other priorities in the CIP. It's a tricky one to fund because while it's not, uh, it is going to be recovered in, you know, future years once the project is completed and it's not a huge amount, um, we just, we don't have an excess of local funding sources this year to fund, to fund this project in particular. Yeah.
I think to, to build on that, right, we had a certain amount of capital reserves that we were, you know, that were available to us to allocate to projects, right? And so we've kind of, staff's recommendation is kind of what, what's kind of been laid out in the report. I think this particular project provides an opportunity, um, similar to what Ms. Sobsey was talking about with the Cherry Hill roof and HVAC system, that it's at a dollar level that we might be able to kind of address it through a budget amendment or end-of-year surplus funds. So, um, so that's, even though it's unfunded, that's why it's still in the CIP because, um, because we're doing the planning and, and homework to be able, to be in a position to be able to get it done.
I guess my concern is that when it goes to council as a staff recommendation to be unfunded, I mean, that creates, I believe, another level, uh, of a, of a barrier, if I can call it that, you know, for them to overcome that, they're going to say, well, if the staff doesn't think that this should be funded, you know, I guess we shouldn't fund that. Now, not everybody will think that way, I realize that, but I think there, there might be a somewhat of a tendency to, to look at it that way, whereas if staff comes and says, hey, this is really, you know, uh, it makes good sense to do this because we're going to get the money back. So, we're kind of functioning more like a green bank than we are making an outlay. Um, so, I realize not everybody will be as passionate about it as, as I am, but, uh...
No, I think it's a valid concern and a, and a good point. I, I do think it could be perceived that way. I also, I feel like based on experience and history, unfunded projects actually get a lot of attention. I think, you know, people are looking for, why are these unfunded? Why don't we have a funding, um, you know, method identified? What are we doing to fund it? When will it be funded? I, I mean, we get a lot of those questions every year, so...
Well, I, I think at a minimum, when you go before council, if you could give some explanation as to, you know, hey, this is unfunded, but don't take that to mean that's not important and, and do focus on the fact that the money will come back in and so it's, you know, it's a pretty safe bet. So, uh, anyway, that's, that's all I had. I, I can't add to our motion, depending on how others feel, to, uh, encourage, uh, council to find funding, uh, for this, but, uh, that's all I had.
That sounds good to me. Any other comments? Or, uh, changes on the motion?
I did want to mention, going back to Mr. Duncan's comment about the, um, generator last week when the, um, power was out, is that, that is one of the new facility projects that we added this year to the CIP. It's, it's funded in fiscal year 27 or proposed for fiscal year 27, um, but it's the City Hall emergency power reconfiguration and that project would, um, implement a, um, a permanent backup generator.
That would just be for City Hall?
Yes.
Okay. Not this, not the neighbors?
To avoid that very issue, yes.
Yeah. Okay.
I did have another comment, I just saw, we got the, uh, public comment from John Ward, I don't know if you had a chance to, to look at it, uh, it addressed the CIP and he asked, why isn't, uh, Oak Street Elementary identified as a candidate for solar PV via a PPA when end of roof life is reached? Is that something you had, possibly had a chance to, to look at?
I didn't, so we did do a, a, a study of, of solar opportunities at all of the city fiscal...
All the city buildings.
Schools as well. I imagine that the reason that one wasn't selected is because it didn't meet sort of the criteria of, um, I'm not, I'm not well-versed in solar.
The discussions we've had with the schools on solar is that the Mary Ellen Henderson School is the best candidate for solar. All three of the schools have roof age challenges, uh, with installing new solar. So, the Mary Ellen Henderson is in the CIP, you saw that roof replacement number in there.
Yes.
Um, all three are candidates for PPAs with like Dominion or, or other solutions, so it isn't, it isn't so much the cost of the system, it's, you got to replace the roof before you put the system on it.
Is that a situation where there still needs to be a study of the Oak Street Elementary rooftop?
Okay, it was included in the study.
It was included, okay.
Yeah, and I believe that, that study was shared with the ESC and folks...
We might be able to share more...
We could share, we can follow up and provide that.
Sharing with the ESC sounds like a, a good way to approach it.
That's been done, so, like, if, yeah.
I think, yeah, it's a cost-benefit analysis type of thing.
Okay, that is all I have.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Mr. Stevens. Uh, do we have the, would somebody like to make the motion and then it sounds like we may have a couple additions?
Madam Chair, if I, if I may, unless I missed it, I'm not sure the...
I haven't opened the public hearing.
Public hearing?
Yes, this is a public hearing. Um, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Is there anybody here to speak on this item? Thank you for the reminder, Mr. Trainer. Thank you for the reminder, Mr. Trainer. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Uh, okay, is, was there anybody willing to make the motion? Thank you, Mr. Krasner.
Happy to do it. Um, something less controversial than the, the last one. And no hard feelings, by the way, Mr. Stevens, not, not adding, nothing's personal. Um, uh, okay, I'm, it's okay, in, the item is officially, uh, fiscal year 2026 to 2031. Sounds very futuristic. Capital Improvements Program. Um, I move that the Planning Commission recommend that the City Council approve pursuant to Section 6.19 of the City Charter and Section 17.08 of the City Code, that the fiscal year 2026 to 2031 Capital Improvements Program, CIP, as presented on February 19th and March 5th, 2025, as summarized on CIP Notebook pages 2-1, 2-2, 2-3, 2-4, 2-5, 2-6, 2-7, and 2-7, based on the following justifications. One, the CIP is consistent with the adopted comprehensive small area and master plans. Two, the CIP provides both investment in new and reinvestment in existing facilities and infrastructure. Three, the CIP aims to balance investment needs with funding resource opportunities while also considering limited staff resources. Four, the CIP complies with adopted financial policies. Five, the CIP maximizes use of grant funding, especially for transportation projects, and strategically uses local funds. Furthermore, the Planning Commission recommends future CIPs include programming and funding for the preservation of existing and expansion of new affordable housing, consistent with the adopted comprehensive plan, Chapters 1 Vision and Chapter 10 Housing, a complete community. Two, planning for future sanitary sewer capacity needs, including a study of current infrastructure and a master plan for future capital investments and maintenance, consistent with Chapter 8, Community Facilities and Public Utilities. Three, continued focus on matching DPW staff capacity for project management to the adopted CIP to ensure timely delivery of projects and maximum use of awarded grant funding. Four, continued investments in multimodal infrastructure, including the installation of protected bike lanes and the expansion of efforts to remove obstacles and sidewalks and complete missing sidewalk links, consistent with Chapter 7, Transportation, Mobility for All Modes, and the city's newly adopted Bicycle Master Plan. And five, an updated watershed management plan and climate resilience plan to guide stormwater and green infrastructure investment, consistent with comprehensive plan, Chapter 5.
Thank you, Mr. Krasner.
That's my motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Uh, all right, discussion on the motion. Mr. Stevens, did you have a suggested amendment?
I do have some language. I can read it, and then maybe we can see that there's enough interest, or if I'm kind of sailing on my own here. It, it would be in addition as follows. Rooftop solar for Aurora House and any other ci- city buildings for which the costs of providing solar are recovered through utility savings should be funded to facilitate completion of these projects.
Does the maker of the motion?
I, I accept that friendly amendment.
I accept.
Okay.
I accept.
Thank you. Do you need him to repeat that?
Yeah.
Want me to read it again?
Yeah, please.
Uh, rooftop solar for Aurora House, comma, and any other ci- city buildings for which the costs of providing solar are recovered through utility savings, comma, should be funded to facilitate completion of these projects. Is that right?
I just want to clarify something in there. Um, it's one of the things that we were talking about earlier was that, for example, Oak Street requires a roof replacement to then be ready for solar. So this feels like there should be some specificity here, that it's not just the cost of providing solar, or cost of providing solar is inclusive of infrastructure improvements to make the roof ready to be.
Yeah, although I don't think they would change the roof just to accommodate solar. I think it's the other way around. It's just when the roof needs replacement, then you would consider including solar as part of it.
I'm, I'm in agreement with that concept. That's not what I'm reading in the amendment. The amendment says anytime if, for example, Oak Street can have X amount of kilowatt hour, can provide X amount of kilowatt.
Well, you're right. I mean, it presupposes there's a study that says that, you know, this building can facilitate its, you know, engineering, uh, from engineering perspective, it can, it can take the weight of a solar system and a bunch of other, you know, kind of things. It presupposes, as was the case for Aurora House.
Do you want to just add a qualifier?
Just a qualification that the, it, for the, any city building, for somebody for the better words, where the, the study has been done and the, or something, I don't want to make it too wordy.
We just say any other solar ready city buildings?
Sure, that would work.
Is that okay with you?
Yeah, that's, that's fine. I was gonna add even something more precise, but that's, if that does it, that's, that's fine with me.
It's just economy of work.
I mean, I, I fully expect.
I don't have that, so.
I fully expect that DPW or whoever will do, you know, a, a, a study, and that we would abide by the, the study.
Yeah, we are installing solar on buildings that have old roofs and.
Right, that's, I'm, but it, the way it phrased me to think that.
Yeah, be clear. Mr. Duncan, did you have a, okay, all right, any other suggestions for the motion? Okay, can we have a roll call vote, please, Mr. Trainer?
Mr. Polinsky?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Mr. Krasner?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Ms. Friedlander?
Yes.
Mr. Krawinski?
Yes.
Ms. Coman?
Yes.
Thank you. The eyes have it. The motion passes.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Sobci.
Thank you all very much.
All right, uh, we are on to our final work session, our final, well, maybe not quite final, um, we're closing in. Uh, let's do 7A, Work Session Item, Econized Closet Site Plan. Um, we are running a little behind. Do we want to make a motion at this point to extend the meeting? Maybe to 11:00 and hope that we can finish by then?
Madam Chair, I move that we extend the meeting till 11:00 PM.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor? Aye. Sorry, y'all. Reluctantly, aye. Okay, welcome. Thank you for coming. You're, uh, all right, let me bring up everything. Mr. Phil, are you introducing the item?
Yes, I will. Um, this item is before you for a work session tonight on a site plan. Um, this is your second work session, and, um, uh, you, um, the latest materials are, uh, were submitted and reviewed by staff, uh, in February. And, uh, anyway, I'm going to turn this over to Jeff Hollerin, our senior planner, that's the case manager on this. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Welcome, Mr. Hollerin.
Thanks, Gary. Uh, good evening, Chair Comant, members of the Planning Commission. I'm Jeff Hollerin with the Planning Staff. Uh, tonight, the Planning Commission has requested to hold a second work session uh, on a site plan application for the proposed Econized Closet Showroom and Office. Um, staff has completed a review of the second submission of the application materials and transmitted staff review comments to the applicant on February 25th, 2025. Uh, while the app, uh, while the comments have been included in your materials, many of them are centered around the requested parking reduction, clarifications of minor site design features, and the provision of various pre and post-development stormwater calculations and details. Uh, line 35 of the staff report includes a comment response table which outlines the applicant or staff's responses to major comments from the last work session on this item. Uh, that was on November 20th, 2024. Uh, for a little bit of background on the project, uh, the applicant is proposing to demolish the existing vacant office at the corner of West Broad Street and Spring Street and construct a new three-story, four stories if you include the basement hovel. Uh, all commercial building totaling 11,740 square feet, uh, in size. Uh, once constructed, um, the applicant would relocate from their current location on Park Avenue to the new building. Uh, the subject parcel currently has a split zoning, uh, between B1 Limited Business and R1A Low Density Residential. Uh, the future land use map designates this property as business and transitional. Uh, with the current submission, the applicant has requested five waivers as part of their application. First is for the, uh, 10-foot buffer around parking lots, specifically on the northern boundary. Uh, second is the requirement for 5% interior parking lot landscaping. Third, uh, the rear yard setback when adjoining a residential parcel as it relates to the trash enclosure. Uh, fourth is a request for 30% reduction in provided parking, um, from 26 spaces required to 18 provided. And fifth, uh, the requirement that no vehicular entrance of a business be within 100 feet of an R district. Uh, lines 103 to 214 of the staff report uh, provide staff analysis of the project against the comprehensive plan, West Broad's, uh, Small Area Plan and the Streetscape Standards. Uh, after that, on line 216, we have provided staff analysis and support uh, for each of the waiver requests, including the, uh, uh, including the parking reduction should a transportation, Transportation Demand Management Plan, uh, be included in a future resubmission. Uh, staff would also like to remind the Planning Commission that code allows for consideration of conditions uh, on these waivers if needed. Uh, and also, uh, as always at the bottom of the report, a brief tentative schedule for the site plan uh, is laid out for your reference, uh, and there has not been any public comment on this project so far. Uh, that's it for me. We do have the owner, uh, the property owner, Noel Sweeney here, uh, as well as the project architect, Zach Gasper, uh, joining us online, uh, to help answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, does the applicant have a presentation? Or would you like to, would you like to speak?
Thank you. Good evening. I know it's late. Um, is this on?
Is the green light on?
Yes.
It's kind of low tonight, so just speak a little louder.
My name is Mark Turner. I'm, uh, the owner of Greenspur. We're the design architect on this project. Um, Zach's online. You can, the particulars, but, um, this is a boutique infill development, what we think is high quality on the corner lot there across from St. James. It's going to be the new, uh, design headquarters for Econized Closets. You can go to the next slide. Site, as you know, is very narrow and skinny, but it's a corner lot. Um, the 10 comments that you guys, next slide, please. So we tried to distill down the, the initial comments. Uh, we came to the agreement on the waivers, which we addressed in the new submission. We provided a TDM narrative as relates to the parking. Um, we looked into the solar car panels for the, or the solar charging stations for the cars. I think at this point, it's cost prohibitive, um, given that we scaled back the size of the building. Um, we increased the buffer to 24 feet on the R1 side of the zoning. With the trash enclosure, it gets to 16 feet, but we think that meets the spirit of law, which is 20-foot setbacks. Um, we reduced the curb cuts to one. Um, we're asking for a waiver to reduce the parking lot island to keep our parking numbers up. It's a very narrow knot, uh, site, and it's hard to configure the parking. Provide more detail on the trash enclosure. We're, we've stated that it's going to look the same as the building. It's going to be a white brick to match the building. Um, security, the basement carve out. The owner is providing security and would like to keep it as designed. Flip the sidewalk landscape buffer to the sidewalk as it protected. We addressed that. Item number nine, number 10, maybe relocate the bike rack to the buffer area. Two bike racks have been provided. Um, the big move we made is we got rid of a story, so we're now down, the original projection was 16,000 square feet. We're down to 11,000 square feet, which obviously reduced our carpet. So we go to the next one's a site plan. So you can see this is the current site plan. With all these items addressed. Go to the next two, three slidesides. These are just some elevations. Keep going. So you can see the parking, we're 26 spots previously, we're 30. Or, yeah, 20 spots. Previously, we were at 11. Reduced the building size considerably. We've added the TDM narrative, um, as requested. There was two other issues, I believe, that came up on the most recent comments. One is how the trash truck's going to get in there. And I think we were going to address that with a no parking sign when the time the trash trucks come. So you can see the traffic city there of the trash truck coming in. We put no parking signs on three of those spots. You know, in the given time the trash come, truck comes. Um, there was some discussion of medical use on the basement. That is no longer, um, a priority of the owner. We're looking at a coworking model for the, for the bottom floor, so it's all going to be commercial use. So I think we've addressed the comments. We're excited about this project. I'm a long-term Falls Church resident. Our firm's been here for 17 years. Noel's been here a long time. This is a high-quality boutique infill development. I frankly think that the city needs good, high-quality boutique development that's infill and not assemblage on Broad Street. I think that fills this role. Um, this is our second meeting here, and we would hope that we could push this and get on the agenda here soon, so Noel can get going with the rest of the project. Noel, do I have everything roughly right, or do you want?
Yeah, yeah, I'll just say a couple of words. Good evening, guys.
Good evening, welcome.
Well, so, um, yeah, we're kind of getting down to a time crunch on this. We're hoping to break ground on it in July, uh, the middle of the year, because we've got a lot of things lined up, so uh, we'd really appreciate any help, I think. I think we've addressed most of your concerns from the last meeting, which I believe was, you know, larger building. We reduced the size of the building. The buffer at the back was a big concern. I know with you, Mr. Krasner, we took care of that, I believe. Uh, parking was a big, big issue. We didn't have enough. We extended the parking. We don't need the other entrance in there. So I think, I think we've addressed pretty much everything, but it's still a beautiful building. Um, my intention is to use the ground floor for Econized Closets, and then we have a mezzanine level above that, which is open with a conference room for the staff. We have a rooftop for, um, the staff as well to go up there if they want to do some work. More importantly, the basement level, I'm probably going to do a, um, remote work concept down there, because I've, I've heard from a lot of people that that's a big demand right here in Falls Church, and there's not a lot of that, and there's frankly a lot of residences in the back behind Route 7, which would really like to just walk in and use that. So we don't need a lot of parking for that. I do believe it'll be, they'll be coming in on their bikes, and they'll be walking to the location. So, um, I think that's fulfilling the need for the neighborhood as well. Um, so, and again, just to summarize from my last meeting, you know, we're, we're trying to sell 703 and 705 Park Avenue, which, as you know, there's two Madison Home developments going on around those. We'd like to do the same at that location. Uh, that's a conversation for another day. We frankly, uh, not to jump off this project, but we have some serious water issues there that I'm hoping, um, we can address later on. Um, there's a lot of flooding on that site for us. Um, but, you know, I'll, we'll, we'll go back to that later, but we do think this is a, a great, um, a great use for this site, and it will be beautiful. We've got a lot of great feedback. I've just posted it on LinkedIn last week. We got 7,000 people commenting on it, so it was, that's, that's definitely something I believe the area wants to see coming. So, do you have any questions for me, guys?
Great, yeah, thank you. Any questions? Ms. Friedlander, yes?
I do. Um, thank you. I, I agree. I, the materials and the proportions are really nicely done. I do like what you've done, um, to address our comments, especially with the neighboring property. Um, I do have a question on the roof. There's, and, and I think staff also mentioned it in their, in their assessment, that there's some discrepancies between the elevations and the, and the perspectives. And I was curious, because the roof has an occupiable space, but on one drawing, it looks like it takes up the entire roof, and on another drawing, it looks like it just runs kind of east-west?
Yeah, it's just in the middle. The older drawing took up a lot more space.
Okay.
But now we can only do approximately 800 square feet, and it's, it's just in the center. So, yeah, if you see right there, the bottom right, that's it, looking from Spring Street. You know, east-west, the bottom right total there.
Okay, and.
So it's, it's not a big area out there. It's just more amenity for the, my staff and Econize, maybe some of the, the, the remote work people, if they want to go up, get some fresh air, look at the views, look down Route 7. That just adds a different vibe to the whole building.
I think so. I'm in agreement. Either way, I was just curious, um, you know, what the orientation of what of it was, because on the, um, civil drawings, you show planting on the roof, but there's no roof structure there. So I was curious how that, how that changes things. Is there still going to be planting on the roof in the two different planter beds? Are they low grasses or?
I'm not sure. We have an occupied zone, so it's got to be 100 square feet, um, and for egress, uh, for only one means of egress. We're going to put the air conditioner unit.
We're going to put the air conditioner unit on the south side of the building there and try to keep the Broad Street view shed pristine. So at this moment, we didn't have plans for, for plantings up there.
I'm looking at C22 and CO7 shows that those are, yeah.
Yeah, we're, we're, can you all, can you all hear me?
We can hear you, yes.
Sorry, thank you. Yeah, we're going to be using a roof deck system called Tile Tech, which is basically, it's, it's got these trays that you can put into it, so part, so you can interplay between porcelain pavers or plantings, you know, green plantings, but they're very low-profile. It's like seedomes and things like that. It's not, it's not, it's not like an intensive green roof up there, but the front half that faces Broad Street will have some, some green roof. It is not accessible, though, because then we would be over our square footage allowed by one egress up to the roof, but it is, it will create a nice landscape to look out over when you're up on the penthouse.
That'd be great. No, I was just curious, because the detail shows the bio-retention at the ground level, and so I was really confused what you were planning. But I, I'm familiar with that roof system, with that green roof system. I think that'll also help with Heat Island, too. So I was curious just how that affects your calcs for stormwater.
Yeah, unfortunately, the Tile Tech cannot be used towards the stormwater management or bio-retention calculations, because it is pretty, pretty thin stuff, but it will look nice. And like you said, it will help with the Heat Island effect.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Duncan?
Sorry if I may, thank you. Sorry if I may, you repeat yourself. So the contents of the building are going to be showroom and some limited inventory for display and so forth, and then a level of space down below, which has some use for staff and potentially some office occupants.
Yeah, so I mean, you could say the whole, the whole thing is kind of office use really as a category. Retail's sort of a loose term with us. We have clients come in and look at samples and stuff. Most of the time, we do, we go to their house, and everything's done online, quite frankly. But, so the lower level will be the remote work, Mr. Duncan, and then the second level will be sort of having displays in there. And then the third, so sort of a retail side to it. And then the mezzanine level will be for my staff or conference room, and for, there's not a lot of them there. I mean, we've got four salespeople. They're on the road most of the day. They might be in the office for an hour or two. Typically, we take, it's by appointment, so if someone's coming in, it's a couple, or, you know, it's not like we've got 10 people in there at the one time. Now, that may change, because we're on Route 7. We may get a wee bit more walk-in traffic. And then the roof is just frankly, just
Decorative.
Small. It's just for the staff to go up and relax, and they want to work up on the roof deck, or people in the, the WeWork-type establishment want to go to the roof deck as well. That's what that's for. We also just like the look of it, to be able to go up there and look down and look at Falls Church from down Route 7, and that'd be kind of cool as well.
Okay, thanks. And the language in the TDM that is displayed suggests that there may be some foot traffic that, you know, is using the building there. You're talking about the remote workspace primarily. I mean, and your experience in your current facility is, is what? I mean, presumably, most of the people who do business with you, like you say, you either go out to them, or they probably drive to you. I mean, do you have much walk-up business right now where you are?
No, 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 no. No, I mean, we're, so we're on Park Avenue.
Right.
So it's not like Route 7. So I'm not sure what it's going to be like, to be honest. I would assume it's a bit better, but we don't, we don't actually have very, one or two people a week might walk in.
Okay. So just to be cautious, I mean, yeah, let's assume that, and let's assume that the workspace downstairs, the remote workspace downstairs is patronized by, you know, half the people walk there and half the people drive. Even if up to half the people who are using the WeWork space downstairs drive, you still believe that 20 parking, 20 parking spots is going to be sufficient?
18.
Sorry, 18.
So it's actually, it's 20. There's 18 in the onsite, and there's two in the street, so it's 20 total.
Just to embellish, we work on, or not we work, but the coworking concept, you know, the footprint in the market says that the bigger offices, so it'll be single offices and maybe a conference room, so that's, the space is only so big. It's not going to be like Cubbies, where you can have a lot of volume. So it's going to be less offices, but bigger. Does that make sense? So the, the ratio of square foot to cars is going to be much different than your typical, you know, just getting a desk and a coworking. Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm. That'd be an interesting experiment.
Yeah, so we're, so we're not actually doing, I'm not sure I told you, Mark, this, but we're not doing coworking. We're doing single offices.
Yeah.
So it's not an area where you can go in, and it's going to be a bunch of people together. Frankly, the demand is to have your own office in privacy. I hate to say it, but I just, a friend of mine owns Office Evolution in Fairfax, and I've had a day with him today, and
The open-air concept is giving way to the more, you know, individual office concept.
So it's individual offices and conference room. I hate to say that's where the, that's where the money is in this business, and that's where we're still the same. You can have
Yes. And back to your 18 versus 20 parking spaces. Two on the street, so do we, what's our position on counting street spaces as part of the development? I mean, technically speaking, anybody can park in those two places on the street, right?
Yeah, I guess so, yeah.
I mean, you know, you, we're not going to erect signs that says parking only for this office building, are we? I mean, that's not really usually what we would do at this stage, at least.
To answer your question, the street parking would not be technically counted as part of this project.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, just to be clear, which believes me in the last question. The most surprising thing is that we've heard no comment from any of the neighbors on Spring Street. The last time we took a swipe at developing this corner, we heard quite a lot from some of the neighbors on Spring Street, and, um, let's just say that they're all happy with the idea, and that's great, but as Mr. Polinski will testify, you know, anytime there is development in close proximity to a residential neighborhood, the opportunity for cooperation and communication is limitless. And I just, you know, would like to vote for this, being assured that at every stage of your construction process, you're in touch with your neighbors and not, not running a complaint-based system, but running an outreach-based, you know, communication system, where folks on Spring Street will be happy to have a shiny new neighbor who has communicated with them during the course of the construction of the project.
Well, I don't know. If you follow Ekenized Closet, his record on reviews is the best in the area. He does very good on the outreach, and he wouldn't have a successful business if he wasn't good at that, so.
So everybody on Spring Street gets a discount on their cabinets, right?
Don't quote him on that.
I'll tell that, I'll tell that to the mayor who lives on Spring Street. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Polinski, did you have a comment?
Uh, two quick questions. I wasn't on commission when this was originally presented, so apologies if these are follow-up questions to ones that have already been asked. But the rooftop area, was there ever any consideration of making that an event space? Like the large, I know you're saying it's small on purpose, because you like it, and it's a place for people to be, but like, it seems local, like a local event space would be a significant boon to that area, especially with Founders Row there and a bunch of people and lots of people who want to throw events, as opposed to some of the existing places. Was there ever any consideration of making that a larger area that could be an event space for people to rent?
We did study that. There's a couple headwinds that we faced. One is the structural requirements to make that whole thing inhabitable. Two is you need two means of egress. With the building this skinny, it just really hurts the layout and inside, so, um, the use and, you know, and the insurance on a rooftop unit, it's just a different category. So just, and that's not his ultimate use there, to open up the public as private use. So I think, I agree with you. It's, it's going to be a dynamite space to, to have a cocktail and lookout on Broad Street, because right now, it's pretty deplorable in that neck of the woods, as you guys know. So I love rooftop spaces, but it just wasn't the right application for this.
It also meant a lot more parking.
Yes, sorry, Mr. Polinski. I actually own a wedding venue out in Manassas. It's well called Sweet Barn, so I know a lot about that space, and it's just, it's, parking's the issue. There's a lot of people in there if we do that, and it's not going to make the neighbors happy.
Fair. And the follow-up question is about parking. So being as close as you are to Founders Row and the WNOD and all these other places, it's likely that, especially being a nine-to-five business, you're going to have a lot of people who are going to be parking there overnight, or not overnight, but during off-hours. Like, they'll be using that to go to the movies. They don't want to pay Founders Row parking. I've seen some of the businesses up on, especially next to North Side Social, next to those areas that say, "We'll tow you at 3:00 in the morning, we don't care." Is there any expectation that you're going to approach it that way? Or would you approach parking as it's reserved for coworking space, or the workspace and the staff during the day, but after 5:00 o'clock, we don't care?
Uh, that's a tough question, because it's kind of a liability issue, too, isn't it? I mean, if you allow people to go on there, that's not part of your business. It's, you know, you need to have that flag, like it's on your own. Unfortunately, I own a bunch of businesses, so I have that insurance liability flag up. So I'm not sure how to answer that question. Will people use it at nighttime if we're not there? Probably. Will we be towing them? No, because that's not in the interest of having good neighbors. So that's probably where we would leave it. I mean, if it was an empty lot at the middle of the night, and it helped out neighboring businesses for someone to use it, I can't see that being an issue. We might have to put some signage up to say, "Hey, it's on your liability if some"
Sounds fair.
"Shouldn't be in here." But that's kind of, that's probably the way I would take it as a business owner, frankly.
All right, thanks.
Better be a little friendly, right?
That, that would be my opinion, yeah, that would be my opinion, but just curious if there was any plans there. Thanks.
Uh, any comments on, oh, sorry, Mr. Krasner.
Yeah. No, I mean, actually, honestly, I think you guys are to be commended for, you know, you really listened to the comments. I mean, I wish every applicant, you know, after one work session, came back with like such significant, you know, responsive, you know, changes based on the feedback. So I was really pleased when I opened up the site plan, the new version of it, because you, as you said, you addressed, I don't, I mean, I did talk about the screening, but not only did you address that, there was also concerns about scale, and there were those rather significant parking reduction requests, and, I mean, I think you pretty much hit everything. I mean, I always liked the concept of what you were trying to do. You just needed to kind of right-size it, and I think, I think you've done that. So you and your team should be commended for, you know, coming back with something that was responsive, but still, you know, meets your needs, and actually, as you said, is a very attractive building, you know, as you've shown it in the elevations. So like, overall, I know, I think it's great, and I'm definitely, you know, there's not much that would keep me from supporting this at this point. I mean, I think the only, you know, kind of question or recommendation was, you know, because the screening area is kind of small, and I see that, you know, you've proposed, you know, some hollies and some, a couple oaks in there. I just wonder if that, you know, just given how people will now be pulling in and kind of facing that house there, if like some type of barrier in addition might be warranted, like a low wall, a low fence, something that, you know, just like headlight level to keep some headlight glare, you know, around the, around the edge of your, you know, kind of the, the edge of the property where it butts that neighbor. I'm not thinking of a tall fence, because you're kind of in a front yard there, it kind of stand out, but like, three-to-four-foot knee wall type of thing, or even just a wood board-on-board, you know, fence that might help to further, you know, provide a little bit of separation between you and, because, you know, that, as I mentioned the first time, once you clear that all out and get all the invasive junk that's there, you know, it's going to be pretty open. I mean, obviously, you should do some outreach to the owner of that property, and maybe they have sort of a preference, but, you know, I would think that maybe there would be some merit or some utility in having a, like a, some type of barrier in addition to the plantings to further, you know, just separate the parking lot from their front yard, because it is going to be a small area. I think you've done the most you can in that tight area, and it's a big improvement from last time, but, you know, just the idea of having, you know, so, wonder if you thought about that, and if you haven't, would you consider maybe having some type of barrier?
Yeah, if you can go to the site plan, I think a third of your problem, and probably the most important third will be solved by the trash, the trash things.
Yeah, some of it, right, there's the trash enclosure, which is like in the middle, but it doesn't kind of cover the whole thing, but yeah.
Wanted to extend a short curtain, you know, knee wall either side. I don't think that's a deal killer for us, but
Sorry, Mark, but you know, something you want to say. The only thing about doing another knee wall on those, you know, they're almost like boxwoods, right? They'll probably come up to about this height, Mr. Krasner.
Yeah.
They're kind of nice to have them there sometimes, because someone pulled, pulled into that corner. I, I personally would prefer to have a bush there rather than a, than a masonry wall, because they're just going to scrape and hit that masonry wall probably, I think.
Yeah.
So that looked a little bit of, like, I think both the masonry wall and a, a good landscape buffer will, will achieve the same things from a buffer standpoint, but if you put a masonry wall on, on the, on those two side parking lots there, I think that, that's just, that's something someone's going to hit.
Yeah, I was thinking, I was thinking more along your actual property line, like adjacent to your, your residential neighbor, you know, just along that.
Just, just as like a light blocker type of thing, headlight, headlight blocker?
Yeah, so not, not to replace the shrubs. I like as much of, you know, as much green as you can plant in that little area, I think is, is good. I was just, I was thinking, you know, along the, along your property line, I guess that's your like south property line, eastern property line, you know, with, with your residential neighbor. That's just what I was thinking. But, you know, again, maybe if you planted dense enough, it, it's not, you know, that important, but, um, I don't know, just a thought, because, you know, they'll now be, especially when the plants are new, they'll be kind of small, and it'll be pretty open, you know, in that area, you know, and, yeah, like I said, it's just a big dramatic change for that. Anytime you have, you know, residential or non-residential that's now immediately adjacent to single-family, you know, residential, it's just that, that transition's always tough. It's a pretty abrupt change from like commercial parking lot to, you know, single-family house, front yard. And so, you know, at a minimum, you should do some outreach, if you haven't already, to that property owner, and, you know, if you haven't already done that, and get some sense of like, just let them know what you're doing, and, you know, maybe they, you know, I don't know, if you've done that already, but, you know, to see if they have like, you know, any kind of opinion on that matter, one way or the other.
To be honest with you, I think they'll be happy to see anything, because right now, we've got bamboo in there, and it's an absolute disaster.
Yeah, it's, it's right. No, I mean, I, I think they probably will like to see something positive. I mean, you know, the building that's there now, yeah, every, the whole thing, yeah. I don't think, you know, but just again, as far as like, you know, the transition from your parking lot to their front yard, you know, the buffer is, is what it is. I mean, it's, it's good for what the space you have, but it's still relatively, you know, shallow, because, you know, it's a small site, so. So anyhow, just an idea. I don't think it's a deal breaker, but just something to consider. Sometimes, you know, like, like a barrier in conjunction with the plantings, like, work well together to kind of, you know, provide a better, a better transition from like, some, you know, these two very disparate uses. That's all. But overall, good. Overall, like they said, like, I wish every, like, second work session looked like, you know, reflected such significant changes that respond to what I heard most of, not just myself, but the other commissioners mentioning the first time. I did see there was a lot of like stormwater comments. Most of them seem technical. It seems like, you know, as long as, assuming you can address like all of that by, by, by the public hearing in your next submission, you know, it's, most of them, I see you wrote acknowledged, acknowledged, acknowledged. It sounds like you can meet all that, assuming you can do that, because there, you know, everything does flow down south of your site into the neighborhood, so, you know, otherwise, yeah, no, I think it's great. I think you
We spoke to the engineer about those calculations, and We spoke to the engineer about those calculations, and...
Yeah.
They're like 0.5 square feet minor...
Yeah, a lot of them were technical comments. They were small things. Yeah, it should be fixable.
Whoever did the review did a good job, because they cut it down to the nickel, so. But he said it wouldn't be an issue.
Okay, oh, great. Like I said, overall, good. Scanning project.
Sorry, can I ask one more question? Mr. Krasner, could you scroll up to the, sort of the covered letter of the presentation or the cover screen with the design of the building? Is that the actual plan for the design of the building? Then, I just want to commend you guys. I think that's fantastic, and I think, especially with the lighting and what that area is at night, from Luz Millers all the way down to Five Guys, like, that would be a, a good place, thing for people to copy as they, or to use as inspiration to go forward. And I just, like, it's, I think it's great.
Thank you so much. Well, Mark, Greenspers are very, very talented at doing stuff like this, but we're also gonna have, the lights at the front will be gas lanterns as well, just to give it that, you know, old world feeling. It's a masonry white structure. Those are black metal canopies that are coming out as well. So, I think, I think when it's all done, and it's gonna be a white, white masonry building as well, so.
And is the entrance to the actual workspace on the side, on the Spring Street side or on the Broad Street side?
There's gonna be, actually, if you look at the front of the building here, on the left...
That's the, that little, the left thing on the door.
That door goes into the hall to go up the stairs. The door in the middle at the front goes in, made as the main econized entrance. And then, there's a door at the back for the, at the basement level for the remote work concept.
Okay.
So, that multiple, that's just multiple egresses.
Okay.
So, there's three ways in.
Okay, thanks.
We appreciate your comments, because, you know, we're drinking our own Kool-Aid, but I think this will be something we, we can all be proud of. Our firm, City Falls Church, Noel, you know, quality development on Broad Street is something I, I think the city and we can all be proud of. So, thank you.
Great, thank you. Any other comments on this one? Mr. Stevens?
No, I'm eager to see this get started, and I think I'm okay with the five waivers that they, that they require.
Great. Mr. Kravinsky?
I support it. It's a beautiful building, and I'm okay with the five waivers.
Okay. Same for me. I kind of wish we still had the third level, but I understand that there are other reasons why maybe that's not possible. Hope you get a chance to read the article that I shared, a study that I shared about single-stair buildings, and how maybe we don't need dual, dual egress buildings and like a two or three-story building. Yeah, so, like, this is the, an example of like the kind of potential, like, economic benefits that the city has to forego for, to meet those kinds of requirements. Yeah, I, I wish this was three stories, to Mr. Polinski's. I do think there would be a great demand, and I, I was pretty confident we could work out the parking issues if there, if there were any, so. But I'm hearing from you that the structural requirements for three stories and the egress requirements is sort of makes that not a no-go at this point. It's not just parking that is holding you back, right, from having three stories?
Yes, and expense issue as well, I mean, frankly.
Yeah, that was a sense that I got last time.
We got the first design and then the budget numbers, and it's really expensive to build right now. Super expensive.
Oh, yeah. It's like 40% more than it used to be, right?
We've got a number in mind, and it was, you know, 50% of that number, so we had to tweak it back.
It's beautiful.
It looks similar, though. I mean, it's, it's, we still...
Yeah, no criticism whatsoever of the building. I think it's gorgeous. I just, you know, I, I'm a big fan of commercial development in the city, and we need more infill like this, and so, I, I would have supported an even bigger project if we could have had it. So, but thank you for doing this. Any other comments, questions? No? Okay. Well, thank you for coming out. We are looking forward to your... Yeah, Mr. Holleran, do you have a sense of when you all might be back? I know we have some outstanding, small, technical issues, stormwater. I think, I noted that too.
Yep, so, so staff is pretty confident that the next submission will be probably the submission that comes to you for a public hearing, assuming that we can work out the stormwater comments. It looks like they have already worked on a TDM, which I'm seeing that for the first time tonight.
Yeah, I hadn't seen that either. So, there is a TDM plan?
There is, I guess that they have one now, but...
Great.
It was not included in their last submission, so I would assume it will be in the next one.
Great.
And so, yeah, I would imagine that the next, what we do need to do, you know, a full review, you know, that takes two weeks upon their submission. And so, we will, we'll get it back to you as soon, as soon as we can. But I would like to think that the next submittal will be the one.
So, maybe early April?
Yeah.
Great.
Yeah, it's...
I think we'd have to get it in by Tuesday of next week for the early April one, and we might be able to do it, but it probably more likely it'd be the April 14th one.
Okay.
I guess.
Yeah. Yeah, I think that, you know, the, the schedule we have up here, you know, I, I like to try to give applicants about three weeks after their work session. I don't know if they'll need quite as long.
We got most, we just got the recent comments last week, but we're, we're pretty far ahead of it, and we might be able to get done Tuesday, but my guess is, if that's a cutoff for the April, the first April week meeting, then we'll probably slide to April 14th, which I think still works for this.
Okay, well, we're looking forward to seeing you all in April.
I want to extend a thanks to Jeff for working with us, and thanks to you all for burning the midnight oil here, so.
We're almost there. Thank you for coming out tonight.
Can I just make one more comment?
Yeah, please.
Just this project aside, though, just to get back for one second on Park Avenue, it would be, I, I'm not sure how to go about this, but we've had three different developers trying to buy Park Avenue office to put townhouses on that development, and there's a massive water problem with water going right onto our site. Our site's been flooded on six occasions now, and it seems there's a bit of an issue with a lot of water in Folchert City draining on our site whenever there's storms. So, I'm not sure what to do to fix it. I would like to sell the site and have it be developed, because I do believe there's a housing issue, and I think it would look beautiful in what, what we have there. So, I'm not sure how to go about that, but I just wanted to make you guys aware of it. Just if there's anything you can do to help, it would be very much appreciated, so.
Yeah, I know the water table there is very high.
Yeah.
And there are other neighboring buildings that have some, some issues. We heard from the Broadway, I think, in public comments tonight.
Just to say, no, nothing to do with this one, but...
No, of course.
The whole point of doing this one was to sell Park Avenue and take that money and invest it back in Folchert City, but we gotta wait a little bit on that.
Good luck.
Thank, thank you. Thank you.
All right. Well, thank you for coming out. So, I think that brings us to our information items. Any planning commissioners' reports? Nope? Okay, it's too late. No reports. Put it in an email to Jack. Director's report. Mr. Fuller?
Yes, thank you. As Caitlin had mentioned, the CIP quarterly report update for February was provided to you, and gives you a status update on the 38 active CIP projects and, and their different status. So, then, also on our upcoming agenda, we had, let's see, get to that page. Yeah, look ahead. So, there it is. So, at this point, you know, I wanted to look at the agenda of the upcoming items, and then we were also talking about the planning commission advance, which we've tentatively talked about for March 19th, and we'd also previously talked about a March 26th date. So, we still have the Quinn site plan that, we worked through that this week, and that will be ready for March 19th, as far as we can tell at this point. It's a few pending things that are coming in, so we're looking to have that for March 19th. And then, the affordable living policy is on April 2nd, and then the Broad and Washington easement vacation, and possibly the site plan you saw this evening would be on that night or the 14th. And so, those are the upcoming items we have. Just to mention Maple and Annandale, the special exception. We were scheduling that tentatively for council, and at this point, we're requesting that they have some kind of land agreement on the parcel that's involved in their application from the city, and it's actually EDA-owned. And so, the city attorney's advised that we should have some LLI and maybe an appraisal, just to at least have that advanced now that they're, you know, in, with a third submission and getting ready to, you know, possibly move forward in front of council. So, and then, once it goes to council and work session, it will probably come back to you at some point after that and for, for an update. So, at this point, it's on hold until we get some general agreement on the land, and then we'll come forward. So, just as an update for that. So, back to the advance, we have an agenda we previously talked about. We provided that in your Monday, I mean, on your Wednesday update for the planning commission package, and so I wanted to go through that and discuss that this evening with you and finalize that as well as the date.
That's great. Yeah, do you want to discuss the date, Mr. Duncan?
Right, yeah. I mean, I thought last time we talked about not meeting on the 19th and meeting on the 26th instead. Can we do the business that was scheduled for the 19th and, and advance on the 26th?
Yeah, I have right now the advance, you know, I have it as a, an hour and 45 minutes scheduled from nine o'clock start. I think we could finish the other item within an hour and a half easily, the Quinn project site plan.
Okay, does the Quinn, does Quinn need to, I guess what Mr. Duncan's proposing is that we cancel the 19th, the March 19th meeting, and we instead meet on the 26th so that Mr. Krasner can join us? I think he is out of town on the 19th.
Okay. It would only be, that would only be a week delay. I'm sure we could actually use a little more time, just getting that in, in final form.
It turns out I may also be out of town, or at least, you know, just barely getting back into town on the 19th.
I see.
I'm sure I'm up for a...
Everybody else is in town on the 26th, correct?
Sure, we can counsel the 19th and schedule for the 26th, and we'll notify the applicant.
Yeah, okay, so we'll have Quinn...
Quinn will be our, the Quinn site plan can be moved.
The Quinn site plan would be the...
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's only a week, so, and we were still working through some things, so that'll give us a little more time to clean that up, and it's only a week delay, but I will notify them, you know, right away, so they don't, you know, schedule their people...
Yes.
You know, for the 19th at this point, so.
That'd be great, and yeah, I don't know, Mr. Kravinsky, if you're asking this, so Quinn would come to us also on the 26th? So, we have Quinn, we'd have sort of a hybrid meeting. We have a regular meeting here with Quinn first. That would be the only item on the agenda, which would be a public hearing? I think you're anticipating, Mr. Fuller?
Yes, that's correct. Yeah, it would be an advertised public hearing.
And then we would move to the, to do our advance. So, we would sort of do, just in the interest of not having staff come out, you know, three nights in a, in a month. You're good. Yeah, okay.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, do you want to talk about the agenda?
Sure. I've outlined the, the agenda that we previously talked about, so we would, you would get a, you know, a copy and a, a basic, you know, we, we could discuss the retail study and kind of the thoughts for next steps. Then the ULI TAP final report, you know, that's still pending for another month or so, but there's some materials based on the presentation that are canned that we can provide to you based on the final report out that, at the ULI TAP event.
I also noticed that City uploaded the video of the presentation that some of us attended.
Okay.
So, that, that could be a good thing to share. It's about an hour.
Okay.
But you hear from the project team on, on their vision for the tri, Gordon Road Triangle.
So, what is your, your, your thought on the media for the ULI TAP?
I think if you can share those presentation slides that the project team shared with us...
Sure.
And, and that, that video recording that hopefully we can all find an hour or so to watch in advance.
Sure, I mean, we provide that, and obviously, we would, we would do the slides for the actual advance, okay?
This is a lot.
Well, you know, we can go through it.
I don't know, I'm just wondering, like, do we need to prioritize or order things? Because I know everybody has a wishlist for things to talk about at the advance, but I don't know that a 10 or 15-minute discussion about some of these items, we need like much more time, so I guess I'm, I don't know. What's everybody, what's everybody thinking?
I thought at one point, we had intended to spend the whole session with the advance as opposed to, yeah, right now, we've just cut about an hour and a half off the advance. I would suggest the advance is a pretty important step in our planning process, that we should probably devote as much time as possible to it. And I don't know that's causing some problems with dates. Is, is the Quinn site plan, does that have to be on the same day as the advance?
It could, I mean, it could be on the 19th, but moving it off to, you know, to the next month off, you know, up to April would be not, not fair to the applicant, yeah.
Well, we'd move it one more week.
To, we don't, we don't have a, another meeting...
Well, we would potentially keep it on the, on March 19th.
Yeah.
And then, I guess what you would be proposing, Mr. Kravinsky, would be to add a third meeting in the month.
Well, I, I understand that's, that's a hardship for everybody, but I, just what you said.
Yeah.
This is a full agenda, and...
Well, that, I guess I'm just...
We're gonna rip through it and check a lot of boxes, but we're really not gonna get into a lot of discussion.
Yeah, I guess I'm just wondering if, you know, I, I think, Mr. Duncan, you were interested in the retail study. I think a few of us were interested in the TAP. Mr. Stevens, you're interested in the cottage housing. I think a few of us were interested in the comprehensive plan. It just see, I'm wondering, like, do we need to remove a few items from this list and just talk about one or two things?
The other idea is, again, you know, we, people don't like to probably have more meetings, but if we set aside like a special meeting just for the advance, not try to do other items, you know, on the same night. I mean, it all depends on like, we want to make the most use of like what an advance is supposed to be, you know, like having a night where we're just like more, maybe more relaxed, quote unquote. We're not like focusing on other items, and we have the full kind of evening to do it. There's some, you know, we've done, didn't that, isn't that how we used to do it?
Oh, yeah, mm-hmm. Yeah, in Dogwood.
Yeah, we sat in there, we got sandwiches, and we...
Yeah, Dogwood.
I feel like that's a, I mean, it's probably a more effective way to have an advance, otherwise, you know, it's not that we, there'd be no utility or no benefit of doing this, but...
Abbreviated is tough.
Yeah, it'd be a quick discussion, we'd move on, it would feel maybe kind of perfunctory. We probably wouldn't get a lot of like, you know...
I guess I'm just wondering, even with, you know, let's say, three hours, is this, is this too much ground to cover? One, two, three, four?
Probably do it on three hours if like whoever's moderating keeps us on, keeps like, you know, keeps us on task.
That can be a difficult task.
Not all, not all problems will be solved in three hours, so.
Yeah.
Well, not that it's my pay grade to do this, but what, the agenda on April 2nd is, is the affordable living policy really gonna be ready by then? I, I thought, the last thing I heard was that they were looking for extra time, at least for the Virginia Village component of it.
Well, they, they had...
Representing that they'll be ready with something?
They had gone on hold for several weeks and stopped the weekly meetings with staff, and then Brendan's going on leave now, and other staff are taking over the project, but the consultants finished their work, is my understanding. And so, they've, they published a schedule that they're moving forward, and this was the date that was given. So, this is a, a recent schedule from them, and it's, you know, it's an updated schedule from what they started with, so. So, that is, and it's, you know, subject to change, but at this point, the, the schedule a week ago has us for that date, so. I mean, originally, we'd started off doing a special meeting on the 26th. We could still do that. I, I thought that Quinn was gonna move off till the next meeting, but they're ready in their site plan, and we try and keep those moving along.
I don't want to hold them up, so if you want to...
Yeah, so I'm saying, you know, I mean, if we wanted to devote the 26th as we had originally planned to the advance, we'll just do that, and then we could have a short meeting on the 19th.
Okay.
You know, we just have the one item, so.
Yeah, if that's okay with staff, that's, and, and the rest of the commission.
Yeah.
It's okay.
I think it's a hardship on folks. I mean, I'd like to hear if there is a hardship on folks, but...
I'm, I'm open to it, I'm always, yeah.
From a scheduling perspective, that's a better use of time.
Okay.
So, you're gonna meet on the 19th and the 26th?
We'll do the 19th for Quinn and the 26th for the advance, and it will just be the advance. And if we could be in Dogwood, that would be great, and if you, I know we've done box dinners in the past, I think it's nice. That would be great.
Sure, I can do that.
And, and I think my only request is before my wife tells me that I can't come And I think my only request is before my wife tells me that I can't come to these anymore because I'm skipping bedtime every Wednesday during the week. If we can, if Quinn is the only thing on the agenda for the 19th, that we can, I think that's the only thing for the agenda on the 19th, so I can get home and do some bedtime stuff. That would be very helpful.
Yeah.
It, it is the only thing on the 19th and like I said, I was trying to free up the 19th for us for the whole advance, but it didn't quite work out and being a site plan, they're, they're, they're ready and so, you know, we want to process them.
Thank you.
So we'll, we'll keep the one item, yes, to answer your question.
Thanks.
So you, you should be home by nine, you can tell her.
Yeah. I'm sure my 10 year old will stay up just, just to make sure I do bedtime.
Well, he's, he's waiting to help you, for you to help him with homework.
No homework till 5th grade.
You got a quorum on the 19th, right?
Yeah.
Brent and I are not here.
Yeah, we have five, is there, we have five for the 19th. Everybody else is here on the 19th.
Everybody else?
Yeah, I'll be here. Just in the interest of kind of, I don't know, streamlining the advance discussion a little bit, I'm wondering if maybe we can just save the ULI TAP? Just share the slides, share, let's share that video. If everybody could kind of watch that, know what's coming and then like, we're just, we're just getting started, I think, on this and so maybe as we have more discussions and things clarify about the direction that the city is going to go in, maybe then we could have like a meatier discussion on it.
Because their written report doesn't come out till after this, right?
Yeah, so maybe when that comes.
And so, yeah, maybe when that's available, it would make more sense to.
To talk about it then. But I think the retail study, Mr. Duncan, you want to keep that on there?
Well, you know, in the same vein, the retail study is, you know, well trod ground and it is been presented for the EDA and I, you know, it's a personal interest of mine, but it's not time sensitive, I don't think. I mean, we're, we're doing the best we can to fill the retail spaces that we've built, so if you're looking for things to pare down, I think you can certainly pare that down till later.
Okay. So that would potentially leave us with the comprehensive plan status. And I know that we looked at that with Mr. Stoddard maybe last fall.
Yeah, I think the last update, well, the, the last kind of scheduling update we did was in May, almost, almost, you know, it's approaching a year again. And so we have material on, you know, the, the upcoming plans that we had, you know, in, in cycle to, to look at next. And then we're continuing to work on the public facilities plan. We had meetings with the city management this week and, and so, you know, we, we've gotten further guidance and the staff is engaged in that and so we see that carrying through, you know, until about June. And then at that point, we'll, we'll probably have something in the, in the summer, early fall that, that we'll take to the public and then, anyway, so we've queued up several others and so, you know, we'd be able to talk about those and there's a prioritization on those. This, the public utilities is the only one that's on the council's initiatives list and so it's identified as the current one to work on and after that, there's no further identified.
So we can make a recommendation.
This would be a good time to, yeah, make a recommendation on the two or three that we have kind of in, in queue, so.
Okay. Mr. Kravinsky, did you have a comment on that?
Yeah, so if we are dropping a few, that's a good opportunity. I think this is a pretty important agenda item from my perspective and I would recommend changing it from comprehensive plan status needed updates and schedule to maybe a more in-depth discussion about our priorities, our phasing, our focus areas for the comprehensive plan and, and really dig into it and maybe get a staff discussion as a starting point about, you know, what you're planning to, you know, the phasing of, of the next chapters and what initiatives you plan in tackling. And then maybe we have a good discussion of that to give staff maybe some guidance. And the reason I say that is because in chapter two of the comprehensive plan, it did say, "Review and revise city policies such as land use and economic development chapter, the zoning ordinance and other comprehensive chapters to reflect the city's current and future demographics and plan for adequate housing availability." I really think we need to have, I mean, that's a wide range of things we're asking the staff to do in terms of reviewing and revising these chapters. So I would recommend, you know, we start with a staff presentation, but then we get into some really meaty discussion about what is the scope of, and what are some of the initiatives we want to throw out when we talk about reviewing and revising city policies. And let me just say, I, when I was on housing, I had an email exchange with Paul Stoddard. I know he's not here, but his perspective was, the next, and this is from an email that he sent me, "The next comprehensive plan updates and zoning updates would get started after the current efforts wrap up. I'm expecting to engage with the planning commission this fall and again during their annual advance in January to help sort out priorities for the calendar year 2025." And then he says, "For what it's worth, now that I have a stable staff, a stable staffing for future planning, I'm hoping to get the comprehensive plan chapters and small area plans on a regular update cycle." So I do think we owe it to the staff to help them scope what revisions and to city policies they should be addressing in their comprehensive plan update. And that could be a pretty weighty discussion.
I, I would be happy to set that up. I'm not going to be able to do it for the 26th. I mean, I'll, I'll have a, you know, a list of the, the upcoming chapters as planned and, you know, we can have a status update. My, my key staffer, Emily, will be on a cruise next week and so it's, you know, she's my key to, for, for leading the comprehensive planning staff. So I would need a little more lead time to pull together, you know, a more robust kind of status than, than we were planning for the advance, to have the, you know, level of discussion that, that we should have on it, so.
I think it's a, I mean, we don't have to finish the discussion, but I do think it's a good opportunity. I mean, we're not going to have another advance for a year, so I think it's a good opportunity to start that discussion. And if we can't finish it because, you know, there's, you know, you're not, you know, I, we completely understand that.
So, yeah, I'm, I'm happy to have it on the agenda and we'll prepare, you know, some, some material for you to, to be able to, you know, but, you know, in terms of getting into the, the details of the policy and, and so forth, you know, I think, I think that's a discussion we can have on an ongoing basis. Yes.
All right. I see we're seven minutes past our expiration date. Can somebody make like a quick motion? Five minutes?
I'm not supporting that.
Are we almost done?
Against that?
Yeah. Okay. All right. Well, oops. I think my screen just went out, so maybe we're, we're getting kicked out of the building.
We're in the green.
Okay. So I think, just to wrap up, I think we're, we're, we're moving items two and three. We'll keep comprehensive plan and cottage, the cottage. And we're able to turn up that, a, a sort of additional, I think, who was it?
You're going to check with Akita to see if she has.
We have, we, we have a, a hot trail and lead for that, so.
Excellent. Yeah, it would be great to see that.
And then, I mean, on the retail study, I can provide that as a informational document like the ULI.
Maybe both, yeah, the retail and, and, yeah.
Director's report item soon.
Yeah.
Great.
I look at some of these, it's not working the issues in terms of the detail necessarily, but just slot it in terms of things that we'd like to see worked on.
Yeah, yeah.
I can, Mr. Fuller, I can send you a revised agenda item for that comprehensive plan or I have it here if you want to add it now or I could just send it to you by email.
Yeah, that'll be fine. I mean, it'll, it'll fall under our comprehensive plan status and, and.
Yeah, this is just an agenda.